April 27th, City Planning Commission meeting to order. And could we have staff call the roll, please?
Mr. Magori.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Castile.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Pajali.
Here.
Mr. Whalen.
Here.
And Mr. Zuloff.
Thank you. I guess all present, so we have a quorum. First item of business on the written agenda is approval of the minutes from the March 2032-2022 meeting. I'm presuming everybody's had a chance to review those minutes, those written minutes submitted. Would anyone care to make a motion to approve?
I don't want to move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Second.
Mr. Pajali, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, discussion?
I think there was a gentleman.
You don't have to, you don't have to like make faces, just say. You have a comment, Mr. Zuloff?
No, please. Okay, I had questions about the last issue on the agenda, and I was wondering if we could review the minutes and make sure that we've concluded all the relevant issues.
We can't hear you.
There were some questions I had about the last issue on, that we discussed, and it was, I think there's some things that, some points that were brought up that I think needed, need to be included, that I think are relevant.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Blair.
Our clerk is out, she's been out the past several days. Would it make sense, since she's not here and didn't have it, she didn't have it, I don't have any here for you to sign also, that you all table it for next meeting, is that?
That would be my recommendation.
We were scrambling to make sure we have everything sorted for you, so.
Do we have to withdraw the first one to do that?
No.
I say no, you just made a new motion to table. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Jackson, seconded. Any discussion on the motion to table? Hearing none, all in favor of tabling, so that we can review those minutes in detail, they are fairly lengthy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion to table passes. We have a number of public hearings, and then there's a matter of new business, item four, I think is, and I'm wondering if we might want to consider moving that ahead of the public hearing, because, the hearings, because I'm thinking those hearings are going to take some time.
Well, if a lot of the people are here for the transit, we could let them not have to wait through a long meeting to get there.
Okay, but there's a number of those hearings. This was just suggested to me by staff.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we move item four up to item number one.
It would be item number five, that was the staff suggesting, the similar main use application.
Okay, well, item number five.
Thank you.
Proceed in that manner.
I apologize.
I'm looking at the agenda, item of.
Item four.
Oh, item four, new business, I got you, I'm sorry about that.
So, so it is item four?
That's correct.
All right, so.
I made the motion.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Miller, seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion to move the number, number four item up to number one has been approved. Perhaps staff could educate us a little bit on that item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property we're starting off with tonight is 1814 Mile and Road, similar main use application. Father's Heart Ministries is looking to put a funeral home on this site. It's currently zoned, commercial service and general manufacturing. To the north of this parcel is general manufacturing and general business. To the east is general manufacturing. To the west is commercial service. To the south is general manufacturing and also commercial service. The existing use is vacant, there was once a church at this property, which is a similar use to what's being proposed tonight. The site, at 1814 Mile, it's on about 2.37 acres, has a total building coverage of 6.9% well under the 50% threshold. The building's approximately 7,200 square feet. The property currently contains two parcels, one parcel is, has a commercial structure, the other has a parking lot that's shared with an adjacent business. They're also zoned separately. The proposal contains over 150-plus approximate paved parking spaces from the previous existing use, with a parking area coverage of 61,000 square feet. The applicant makes, the applicant wishes to make this a funeral home, and that the 100% of the gross foyer will be used for funeral services. The hours for operations will be as an unneeded basis, including weekdays and weekends, with an option for daytime and evening services. The buyer intends only to make cosmetic changes to the building, no structural changes will be needed or expected to be done. So, based on the services that the applicant had provided, they plan on doing the traditional funeral, funeral services, which includes the removal, transfer, deceasing and embalming, direct burials, memorial services, gathering visitations, luncheons, tribute videos, online obituary postings. With talking with the applicant, there's no plan on any cremation on site, so very limited use of the proposed structure here. Staff, based on the 11.09.11 determination of similar main uses, staff recommends the funeral home be considered a similar main use based on the following. Our understanding of the intent is that customers will only be here for processions and also following normal business hours of other businesses in the area. So this, we believe this will have less activity than a lot of, excuse me, commercial manufactured uses around the site. There is a cement operation, two parcels down, we do believe that this use has less, excuse me, less.
Intensity.
Intensity, yes, excuse me. So we do feel that this would be similar to the church as far as noise, odor, and other gentle influences, and is appropriate for the general manufacturing district. We interpret the funeral home will be, not create traffic greater to the extent of retail businesses, stores, and services allowed in general manufacturing and commercial service districts. And staff has determined this proposed use would not exceed traffic generated from these uses as well. The only part of the zoning code that calls out for funeral homes as a direct use is residential business, which is the least restrictive use of business, and this, or the most restrictive, excuse me, the least restrictive use of general manufacturing is what's in front of us today. So based on parking requirements, the applicant had said the building, 7,200 square feet, would be 100% used for services. Now, staff did our own evaluation. To meet the 150 parking requirement, 6,000 square feet of the building would need to be used as assembly space. Staff feels that 6,000 square feet will not be used as assembly space, so they would meet the parking requirement with 83% of the existing building being the requirement of the threshold. We do feel that less than 83% of the building will be used for the assembly space, so not triggering any further parking requirements. This also doesn't trigger any further landscaping requirements, because there's no additional building coverage. So based on that, there's no additional comments from other departments. Staff recommends the pro-similar main use at 1814 Mile and Road with the following conditions, and that's that all applicable permits are obtained from the building, engineering, and planning departments.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. Are there any questions from the commission? Mr. Miller.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the staff. Am I thinking wrong, or did this before it was a church, used to be the old Orioles Club that we all remember?
Yes.
And, I don't know, to me, it had a more impact on my life as the Orioles Club, and thinking of it that way, it's, it's easy to see that there was lots of parking there, and the building's beneficial reuse as something like a funeral home. I don't really see how that would have a negative impact on, on the neighborhood or the situation. It seems like, yeah, they got lots of parking as the Orioles Club, when it was a restaurant and a dance hall and, and everything else. And I never was there as a church, sorry, I don't remember.
Thank you. I do have a question, Mr. Oaks.
Yep.
So just so I'm understanding, the commission is not being asked, asked to approve any rezoning?
That is correct. Because there isn't a specific funeral home use called out in this zoning category, this would more or less be saying it's similar to, or less.
No way in the back end.
I don't, destructive isn't the right word, but.
So the, there's a number of points that you're determining whether it would cause any more or less, any more traffic than the, the existing uses that are allowed, or dust, or a nuisance basically, so, than another allowed use in the, in the district. So is it similar in the intensity of use, in which we're, since it, since a church is allowed, it seems very intuitive to say that a funeral home is almost the, is a very similar use as a church.
Especially since you have funerals in churches.
Correct. So that the building in the manufacturing district is appropriate for this use.
And is this commission's determination final at that point, or is this something then that gets passed to the city commission for final approval?
This determination would be final for this use, so the parcel would be allowed to be used as a funeral home in this case.
If, is there any subsequent control over if, and I'm not anticipating any, this sort of usage would be more extreme than any other one allowed under the current zoning, but if it were, is that something the city would still maintain some level of control over, or, or once this has been determined to be similar in use, that's it?
This is a parcel-by-parcel case, so the, this parcel, for this purpose, for the purpose of a funeral home, is the only thing that would change about this particular parcel.
Okay, and my, that's, my question is, and I don't foresee this, I cannot perceive of this, this usage, but just so I'm understanding, once we do this, if the activities that are being proposed somehow exceed those comparable limitations, it's already too late at that point?
My understanding is this can be revoked by the planning commission as well. We could check on that for you.
Page eight, D. In the, in the agenda, page eight, D. Okay. The planning commission may revoke similar main use permit if the property is not maintained in a manner. Okay, so, so we are extending one as long as they maintain that level, and that, that to me.
For the purpose of the people out here, could you all please use your microphones? Because we cannot hear, can't hear what you say.
Okay, we'll do that.
Please use your microphones, please.
You have to speak directly into the microphone.
Yeah, you gotta make it, get it close.
As long as it's angry.
Mr. Chair, to answer your question, Connor is correct, that the planning commission may revoke the similar main use permit if the property is not maintained in the manner that would conform to the required standards, and that's 1109.11D.
Thank you, that clears that, that gives me the answer to the question I asked. Any further questions or comments from the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Good job.
I don't have a problem with this, this request, I think, you know, they're similar, they're first cousins, the church and the funeral home. I do wonder though, is, are funeral homes or funeral parlors, are they regulated by the state in any way, or we're just allowing this use, but is there another layer of regulation that goes into those? Does anybody know?
I am.
This gentleman?
Oh.
Mr. Lehrer, could you come up to the microphone?
Maybe we can shed some light here, can you hear me okay, audience? Thank you. My name is Matt Lehrer with Hody Enterprises in Sandusky. We represent the seller of the building, Father's Heart Church, and also the agent for the new owner of the property, which will be Pastor Ray Robinson, Jr., and his group. And so they've structured a purchase arrangement for the property, and I'd like to turn it over to Pastor Ray, so he can give you a little background on the use, and any questions you might have that pertain to the funeral home business. Pastor Ray?
First of all, we're entirely honored to have this privilege, and we're excited about the opportunity to serve here in this community. As Mr. Lehrer has expressed to you, I am the proprietor of Brown Robinson Funeral Home, which did the land contract purchase with Father's Heart. Piggybacking on the question that was kind of raised regarding regulations, any funeral home has to be licensed through Ohio, the Ohio Funeral Directors and Embalming Board, so there is regulated authority over how the business and how things are conducted in that facility, in conjunction with the laws and the regulation of Erie County. So it's not just renegade, if you give us permission, we just run forth, that's not how, how it works.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, and maybe I can address, but we're excited, as you've expressed, the funeral industry and church go hand in hand, because oftentimes, having a gathering sitter, for the mourners is in conjunction with religious beliefs, so it's kind of in connection. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Reverend.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Castile.
If no one else has any other comments or questions, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the application contingent on the staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion from members of the commission?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Zuloff.
I suppose it doesn't matter where the, the comments get inserted, I would say that this is a fitting use for that property. I can see how rezoning would have been fine, too. I don't know if this is done because it's more expedient, or because it's a better way to do it, or allows, allows more different future uses. But I, I welcome this use, I think it'll allow the property to be fully used, it is appropriate for the site, so I'll be voting yes.
Any further questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none, I guess we'll call the question.
Mr. Magori?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Castile?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations, good luck. All right, moving, I guess, kind of backwards, but following the agenda, the next matter on the agenda is item, current listed item three, public hearing. Dennis Graul has submitted an application to vacate a public right-of-way at an unutilized extension of Church Street. Adjacent properties include two adjoining houses, I can read that with parcels, but I'm not going to read those parcel numbers. I would ask staff to explain this a little bit to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are looking at a parcel on the end of Church Street, on the corner of Church and Ward, as you'd mentioned, is a right-of-way. Because of that, there's no zoning on this parcel, or lack of parcel, excuse me, to the north. It's zoned R175, single-family residential. To the east is roadside business. To the south is residential multifamily, and then to the west is R175, single-family residential. Currently, right-of-way, that's unused by the city, excuse me, I'm sorry about that. The applicant filed, has filed vacation between 4808 Ward Street and 4904 Ward Street. It's approximately 10,000 square feet of land. It is vacant with no future plans of street extension of Church Street. Staff believes that this was the original intention of this right-of-way being in place. The applicant claims to have been maintaining this right-of-way for some time, and would like the land for his efforts. The land would be parceled by a licensed surveyor, split evenly, and combined across two directly adjacent properties. Survey map, survey map has been included in this application. There is an existing stormwater sewer that extends through the right-of-way into the adjoining, excuse me, adjoining stormwater retention area by the residential multifamily use on adjacent parcel. Planning Division comments, the current infrastructure is in place on the property, this makes the parcel an unlikely option for any buildable structure, at least on the southern half of the split. For these reasons, the Planning Division does not oppose the vacation of the right-of-way as long as those easements are followed in future development. Engineering staff did comment further on that, there is a 10-foot on each side of this stormwater pipe easement that needs to be followed, like I'd mentioned, which makes most of this parcel unbuildable. The property to the north would be able to possibly extend on their house, or parcel that off and put a residential use there, but it would be very limited. So because of that inclusion, staff is no opposition to the approval, and the proposed public right-of-way vacation, following, the following exceptions is that they get all their permits from the planning, engineering, and building departments prior to construction.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. Any questions from members of the commission?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. Staff had explained to me why this didn't, wasn't going through the land bank. I think it would be a good idea to explain to the crowd why, why this isn't going through the land bank.
Through the chair, to Mr. Jackson, thank you.
Mr. Blair.
So the, this parcel is not currently in the land bank, the city land bank, that, normally the way that we obtain parcels in that way is through a foreclosure process, it's a different documented process. This is a piece of right-of-way, so what that means, what right-of-way means, is that it could be an alley or roadway in the future if the city maintained it and wanted to create a transportation corridor through there for any purpose. Staff doesn't believe, well, we've determined that it is not necessary to maintain this right-of-way, because there's no longer other right-of-way that would allow a future roadway connection, even if that was determined in the future that we would want to, and the, since, we would also generally argue that a developable parcel remained vacant so someone could build a structure on it, like a new house, but because the sewer easement is through here, we, we determined that it is not feasible for future development, so we didn't oppose the right-of-way vacation. It is different than the land bank process, the original question. One thing that I would articulate is, I, my understanding was, the engineering department's recommendation was that an easement be documented, and because it's currently a right-of-way, I'm not sure the easement is documented, so I would want to make sure that if the vacation passed, that would be contingent on an easement be documented for the sewer passing through there, if it's not currently in place.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Blair, or Mr. Oaks, either one, my question is, just so that I'm understanding all the pros and cons, so, a, a pro for the city is that we wouldn't, the city would not need to take care of it. Now, I understand the adjoining property owner says they've been mowing it, but they could stop, and so we, that would be an additional thing, we would, the city would have to continue to mow. Is, is there any, and what we would be giving up, I'm just trying to weigh the pros and cons, would be the ability to, to run a roadway through there in the future. Has it been considered, would that ever be logical, is there any place for that, that road to extend to at this point?
Because, if you look in the map that Mr. Oaks just pulled up, the western property was likely right-of-way at some point, that has been vacated previously, there's structures on it, so there's no current way for the city to connect Church Street to Providence Drive, which was right off the photo here, and that was a factor in the determination that, we believe it's appropriate to vacate the right-of-way.
My recollection, when vacations of right-of-way are requested, adjoining property owners are notified and asked for their input, is that correct?
That is correct. So if it's a petition, and all signatures are verified of the surrounding abutting properties, then the notice goes to city commission. If not all abutting property owners sign, then a notice is placed in the newspaper once, once a week for six weeks before it goes to city commission. So regardless of the process, this will go to city commission after it, after the planning commission, if, if the planning commission recommends approval, then it will go to city commission, and there'll be a notification process.
Other than the city maintaining it, if, if this were not approved, is there any other benefit to the city that I'm missing at this point by letting go of it? It's not being sold, so there's no, no sale proceeds gained, and it would be subject to a recorded easement to maintain that drainage line. And, and do we know it's a, a commons of Providence that's at the end of that extension, is that correct? That's the.
That is correct, yep.
Do we know whether they have been, are they even aware of this yet?
They are, they did sign off on this, this, this application, excuse me.
Okay, thank you. That answers my questions, Mr. Miller.
I feel a little reluctant to add something that wasn't specifically, but in answer to your question, my understanding from sitting in a lot of vacations over the years, there is another benefit that accrues to the city. Once they determine that they don't need it, and the land is split between the two adjoining property owners, that actually increases the size of those two property owners' holdings, and takes it from off the tax roll to on the tax roll. Just saying.
And I had thought of that, but I didn't say it, but.
I did say it.
Yeah, but I'm glad you did, I'm glad you did. Any other questions or comments from the, from the commission?
Retirement is good for you.
Can we take questions or comments from the floor?
I have one comment. Fire safety.
Okay, you want to come, come up and state your name and, for the record, and express your concerns?
My name is Chuck Kreisner, I'm a resident for 40 years.
And, and what address currently?
I have several addresses, my address is 705 Perry Street.
Okay.
The fire, we have a lot of these easements, and a lot of like, open alleys, if you want to call them, I don't know what the technical terms of it is, I'm just a layman, but I know the fire safety is important, and also, you know, the, the safety forces use those back alleys and whatever this, this particular easement, I don't know if that, that would help in fighting a fire by leaving it open or not, you know, I'm not a fireman, but I see there's nobody here from the fire department either, so the fire department apparently is not aware of this.
I believe they are, I think they were asked, and, and not to be argumentative in any way, but from what I'm understanding, this is essentially a grass yard or field right now, and because there's going to be at least a 20-foot easement down the center of it, nothing can ever be built on it, so really, the only difference is, is there's going to be a change of ownership if it's approved from the city, half to each property owner with no ability to build any structure on it, so emergency vehicles could still access that.
I thought it was being blocked off completely, yeah.
No, 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 it's just, it's just a change of.
We're all having trouble hearing in the audience, there's no speakers back there.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your concerns, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman? Again, not solicited, but the report specifically indicates that the fire department did review this request, and has no concerns about vacating this.
That's what I, that's what I recollected as well. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Pajali?
I don't have a problem with this request, I mean, this.
I mean, this, one of the common approaches with the land bank is to the mow-to-own program. And if you're mowing a side yard, sometimes if a land bank has a property, they'll offer you that property for your sweat equity. I see this as similar to that. And surely, you're familiar with the rule of adverse possession? So I don't know how long the owner's been maintaining this property, but I'll be voting yes.
Thank you, Mr. Pajali. And also, it's my understanding that we are just making a recommendation that the City Commission is going to have the final say on this. So anybody that wanted to be pro or con against doing this could also show up at the City Commission meeting and explain their concerns or their feelings in favor.
So, Mr. Chairman, you're saying that there will be a public hearing on this at the City Commission meeting, too?
It's going to be presented. I don't know if they'll call it a public hearing, but it'll be on their agenda.
Okay.
I think anybody could attend.
You seem to be saying that anyone would have a chance to comment on this at the City Commission meeting?
I think they would, just like anybody, somebody commented here today.
This is a public hearing. I'm trying not to wince here. Okay.
You do, Mr. Zuloff, there is an opportunity for people to comment at the beginning of the City Commission on agenda items. So I imagine if somebody wanted to comment, they could if it's on the agenda.
Right, before the, before the.
Well, at the beginning of the meeting.
Before the matter is heard, right. Just to clarify, it's not like a public hearing here. Or is it? That's what I was asking for clarification on. And if it's okay to say, I don't know, but.
I have the printout sitting on my desk that I do not have in front of me.
I suspect maybe it is a public hearing also.
I would also, excuse me, I would also suspect that it is because of the newspaper process. It's going to have to go through the six consecutive weeks without the valid signatures if they aren't in place. So that would lead me to believe that it would be a public hearing.
Right. And we have had vacations in the past that did not go to the Planning Commission, so I'm not, it's not clear to me. I happen to believe and have been advocating for the disposition of any public property being heard at the Planning Commission level. And we haven't always been consistent on that. We have vacated street right-of-ways without the Planning Commission, I believe, and a few other property dispositions and city property uses. So I'm glad we're doing this and that everybody has a chance to weigh in before the final legislation goes forward.
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff. As you have noted, and again, as this is a public hearing rather than just an application to us, are there any other parties in the audience who would wish to speak pro or con against this matter? Seeing none, hearing none, any more comments or discussions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that this be approved, subject to staff recommendations.
Second, excuse me, I'll second that motion.
Ms. Castillo, second. Any discussion on the motion and the second?
By staff recommendations, are you including the one that's not on here that they have recorded easement?
Yes, that's specifically what I had in mind.
Okay, so the motion includes an actual recorded easement. And Castillo, you second it that way, too?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion is clarified. Hearing none, I guess we call the question on that.
Mr. McGory?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Castillo?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
And Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Thank you. It's been passed, or it's been approved. Moving on to the next item under public hearing, Joseph C. Retordo, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, the third, has submitted an application for amendment, rezone map for 709 Perry Street. There's a parcel number which I will not bother to read. The application is to rezone the parcel from residential two-family to residential business with the purpose of being able to do transient rental under that residential business categorization. Perhaps staff could educate us further on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property in discussion is zoned R2F, two-family residential. To the north is a small parcel that's also zoned R2F, two-family residential. To the east is R140, single-family residential. South is R2F, two-family residential. And then to the west is commercial service. The existing use of this property is residential. As you'd mentioned, they're proposing to rezone it to residential business. Currently has a two-family structure on the site. The structure is roughly 2,400 square feet of living space total. And as you'd mentioned, they look to rezone to make this marketable for transient occupancy. The Bicentennial Plan outlines a number of points, two of which reflect this application, to support the development and rehabilitation of a variety of housing types specifically for short-term transient rental, and also zoning changes to encourage hospitality, determine appropriate zoning for transient rentals. So based on the comprehensive plan, staff does feel that it meets those two points of the comprehensive plan. So RRB, the proposed zoning, is the minimal impact zoning change to this neighborhood to allow transient rental. It is the most restrictive use of the transient rental options, other than a proposed overlay. It is a logical transition. The block to the north is all residential business. Now, there is an adjacent parcel that's zoned commercial, which would allow transient, but staff feels that that would open up a lot of intense uses for this neighborhood that is still currently a residential neighborhood, where the residential business would limit the business uses and not alter, possibly alter the character, excuse me. So the parcel to the north is currently 22 feet wide, the two-family residential parcel, the orange one right to the north, currently an alleyway and access point to the commercial zoning behind this proposed residence. Staff feels that the block zoning is not a negative in this instance because that part of the parcel adjacent is not buildable. The 22 feet is below the building requirements of 33 feet for this zoning. So staff feels that this shouldn't deter the Planning Commission opinion on the rezoning. We don't see it as a negative for that reason. It is only an access point currently and not buildable. Other departments did not have any concerns or comments for this application, and because of that, staff is in support of the approval of the proposed amen zoning map for 709 Perry Street with the following conditions, and that's that they get all their permits from the planning, engineering, and building departments prior to any construction or renovation.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks.
A few comments, thank you. Did we receive any calls or questions about this in the meantime, this agenda item?
There were no negative calls. Actually, adjacent on the corner of Perry Monroe, we had a few more applicants want to also propose to zone to the similar thing, which you guys would see next month. So if anything, positive feedback of this request.
Thank you.
And Mr. Jackson asked if I would, or Mr. McGory asked if I would talk about this just a little bit more before you, your discussion, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So the applicant had reached out to me initially, and if someone wants to do transient rental in the city, there's a couple of different options, where it's currently allowed by right, by the zoning, in six different zoning districts, and then if it's allowed in a transient rental overlay district. So there's a couple of different ways if they're currently not allowed to operate and they would like to, that it's feasible. We get dozens of these calls, and we tell many, most of them, that it's not really an acceptable option from the staff's perspective. In this case.
To rezone.
To rezone, to create a new district overlay. In some places in the city, from our conversations with you and our conversations in the public, we have a general understanding of what might be a good idea or not, and we advise callers based on our understanding and expertise. In this case, this applicant approached me about this potential, and I suggested that he look at a rezoning option and asked him to look at rezoning the parcel to the north, that kind of the skinny orange one to the north of him, just to make that RRB wrap the corner and be a contiguous district. He did quite a bit of work with the surrounding property owner to pursue that option, and the property owner was not interested in that option. That's one thing I wanted to let you know. Another is, this block historically and currently is a mix of residential and commercial uses. For that reason, this would not be more or less intense than the existing uses today by allowing a transient rental on this property. The entire block is centered with commercial service zoning, that dark red in the middle. There's a use on there right now. You can see on the aerial that has multiple vehicles parked. There's some fairly intensive commercial activity on this block. So a mix of residential and commercial, like I mentioned, is historically and currently the use of the surrounding area.
Thank you, Ms. Blair.
Questions?
Mr. Jackson?
When you're looking at these properties that want the transient overlay, your determination whether it's going to be good or bad, is it how close they are to a transient overlay zone, or that doesn't matter how close they are? Do you take that into account?
To clarify, this application is for a rezoning of a property, not a transient rental overlay district. We do have two following for overlay district. There has been an unclear path forward on how to create new transient rental overlay districts, which if applicants and community members can listen to the last few Planning Commission meetings online, if they want to be really caught up to date with how much conversation we've had about this, we've had conversations at almost, I think, every Planning Commission meeting I've been in since I started in this position nearly a year ago. There is only one existing transient rental overlay district. Last month, we saw a case where one parcel was added to that because it was contiguous. It was right next door to the existing district, so that district extended there. In this case, it's not near any new transient rental overlay districts because there's already so much residential business surrounding. I would not have advised this applicant to pursue a transient rental overlay district in this case because there's already residential business zoning very nearby. That's why I advised him to pursue a rezoning to residential business. I thought that was more appropriate and less of a zoning intervention than the pursuit of a new district in this location.
Thank you.
Ms. Blair, in reading the packet, am I understanding that, or do I read it, that the owner of the premises lives in one of the two units that's in the building right now, you know?
I'm not sure of that, but the applicant is in the audience if you'd like to ask him questions.
Okay. You're the owner?
Yes.
If you'd come up to the microphone.
How you doing?
Hi.
Joe Retordo, I live at 709. So yes, I'm in the unit. And like she described, when you pull back on that area, the reason we decided to go with residential business and be transparent with what we're planning on doing to move ahead for the transient was just to be transparent about it. I think if I'd have came with just residential business, we wouldn't be talking about the transient at all, and we'd just be on that. Then two weeks from now, I'd be doing the transient. The one thing we looked at in that block was, it made sense. Like, if you pulled back the whole city, that block, if any block is going to get residential business, it's that house right there. Because when you look behind me, that's all commercial. And then the whole, if you cut it right in half, it's all residential business. So that's, yeah, so we're in the unit now. I actually do photography and video work and a couple of other things, so I'm actually working out of the home every day, so.
And not that it would be the be-all, end-all, but is it your intention to continue to occupy one of them or?
Well, there's a lot of different avenues. I could go a few different ways, depending on what we do here tonight and what. We're looking for another property right now in town here. That eventually could be turnkey for me to walk in and work on the lower unit because I do photography and video work and edit. Not that we have clients coming in our house, and we may have a client sit down every once in a while with us on a commercial level, but it's not like somebody's coming in there all the time to get their photo taken or do video work. So that could be another use, right? So that's why residential business, not just the transient, but the residential business would be important to me also.
I appreciate that. Any other comments?
No, just happy to listen.
Any questions of the applicant from the commission? Mr. Miller?
No, I'm good. I'm ready to make a motion when you're ready to have one.
Unless somebody else has a comment, I'm ready for a motion.
Well, I have more questions.
Okay, go ahead.
I would have preferred to ask the question before we got this far, but so just to clarify the staff's position, this is a better way to do this and that you would not have recommended for a transient overlay here based on the ordinance, and that you can recommend for a change in zoning that will allow, in this particular case, you think it's appropriate to go to the commercial zoning that would allow. Does that sum it up pretty well?
In this case, yes, we believe, we have determined that it's appropriate to go to the commercial zoning. It's the minimal of intervention. And staff does not have a way of creating or recommending a new transient rental overlay district. That's in the hands of the commission. So that's another reason why it's a quicker path for our applicant to do business in the city.
Yeah, thank you. And I would inject a comment. I would not disagree, or I would not agree with the assessment that we don't have a clear path for transient rental. We don't. It was not the intent of the legislation to do that. It's like a clear path to any other zoning change. The path for zoning, planning and zoning legislation is for the Planning Commission to promote, to propose it, for the City Commission to propose it, or for a citizen petition initiative, of course. But it was never the intent to ease that process so that everyone who would like to do it can do it and impose the whole process on the system and on the neighbors. So I hope we never have an easy path for asking for transient rental in the middle of a stable neighborhood. It was never my intent when I participated in passing that legislation in the first place, and I think it's inadvisable to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I have a kind of a question, comment.
Ms. Castillo.
Mr. Zuloff kind of sparked it. I do remember in some of our initial transient occupancy meetings, when you were defining kind of what calls for these overlay districts and different things, one of the things was that the property needed to be in distress or the area or something like that. Remember, we were discussing, because we couldn't, we were like not sure how to define that. So what about this area, other than it being close to commercial businesses and things, that makes it great? I mean, is it close, like, is it in that outreach of downtown that you had discussed earlier in one of your PowerPoints, I guess, or what? I don't know. I feel, because you said in a stable neighborhood, and that just made me think.
Sure. Through the chair to Commissioner Castillo. We are looking at a zoning change on a single parcel, and in this case, the staff consideration is more about, is residential business appropriate for this parcel, regardless of what they're going to use it for? And because this block is majority residential business and the center of it, everybody's backyard is commercial service, that was what that determination was based on at its core. That's what the staff recommendation is based on.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would agree with that assessment.
And as a citizen, I would never come to the body here to discuss this if it was like you're describing. If I looked at a C, and I, you know, what's a stable community? Renters can be stable communities, too, you know? So it doesn't matter what, it matters like she's saying, too, and like the recommendation is that it isn't a residential business or commercial area. But if I was in the middle of a C of single-family homes, I wouldn't even consider this unless we were looking at doing an overlay in an area that made sense. But that's not what I'm talking about here. And like I said, I think if you draw it back, you're going to see that it's, it makes sense to me.
Thank you.
But we appreciate, I appreciate your time. And if you have any other questions, I'll stay until the end.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Just one more comment. That makes sense. I just want to go on record to say, I am just not a fan of spot zoning or following the investor with these overlays and these rezones. the investor with these overlays and these rezoning and things like that. If we want to do what Mr. Retoto said in the beginning, which he said, "I looked and made sure it made sense for the city." I definitely agree with moving forward with more transient occupancies and things like that, but I think it would make more sense if we looked at our city and decided which areas would be best for that investment, and then tried to encourage our investors to go there. So, I do appreciate you doing that legwork, and I'm 100% behind supporting that kind of progress. But as far as just Jane Doe and John Smith want to make some money on their property, so let's change the zoning in a normal, thriving neighborhood, I'm not a fan. I just wanted to put that out as my opinion on this transient conversation, because like Aaron's pointed out, we've been discussing this at every meeting. So...
Any further comments or discussions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Ms. Castile. I think that, I'm not opposed to transient housing, but I think we need some guidelines, some regulations, and we need to base our decision on those guidelines and regulations. I would hate to approve this tonight, or move it forward, and then down the road, we have a similar applicant that we have to say no to because we did put some guidelines in. And I go back to what I've said all along during my career with the city and with the county. We always talked about getting single-family homeowners to move back into the city, and this is just another way of creating more rental. And again, I'm not opposed. I just think we need some guidelines, we need some percentages, we need to cap it, those kind of things. And I would be willing to look at that if any of my colleagues up here would like to join me. I would also like to reference a white paper that Ms. Blair wrote on December 7, 2021. It's just an excellent piece, and I think she shared it with all of yous, with all of you, and I think we should use this as a guideline moving forward. Gives us a number of options.
Thank you, Mr. Pajali. I would like to try to reiterate what I believe Ms. Blair said, and even though the applicant is being transparent about his possible transient rental usage, this is really about a rezoning that, from what I'm seeing, makes decent sense because of the adjoining zoning and what's going on around this particular piece of property. And what's going on around it is not bad. I mean, it's, but it, I don't see a reason not to change this, given what's going on around it, just because by changing it, it would allow, if he chose to do so, to do transient rental. So, now, that is really totally separate from a transient overlay district. Any other?
I also have one other comment.
Sure.
It's not only the transient rentals, that we already operate businesses in town here. So...
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I didn't hear what you said.
So, it's not only just the transient rental, it's that we already operate business in town here.
Yeah.
Out of there. It makes sense, you know? Like, it's not like, and I guess that's my point. So, we're already in the community, and the reason I'm in this community is because things are changing, right? So, this is the reason I chose to buy here, the reason I operate my business out of my home, and then further down the line, will be operating in a commercial setting outside of that home someday. So, this is key to getting my business into town here. So, like I said, whether, I'm trying to be as transparent as possible with the transient. I can guarantee you this, is that if it turned out to not be right for the community, I would withdraw that and go back, because the house still cash flows either way. So, I just wanted to bring that up, like, to Mr. Pajali.
And again, Mr. Chairman, I'm not opposed to this. I guess what I am saying is, I, no, let me clarify. I'm not opposed to this. I'm saying that we should have some processes and procedures in place when people come so that we can make that consideration then.
Totally.
If we put those in place, and you come back and you fit into those processes and procedures, I've got no problem with what you're trying to do.
Well, and I think that goes back to what this gentleman was saying, is that we do, we are, as a community, we are continually inching forward on this process, right? We have put in place, what was your?
We know what we're doing for residential business when we're rezoning.
Yeah.
We know what we're doing with Airbnb right now, as it stands, transient rentals.
We have a zoning map, right? So, we are working on that, and I agree with you. But if you had any, when I sat back down listening to you, even with what he said, if you had any reservation tonight about approving this, what would it be? Like, what would we have to bring to you, other than what we brought to you today, to say this should be?
My reservation is that we should be very clear on how we proceed with these transient rentals. And if that means two transient rentals in any block, those are the things I want to iron out. I don't want to, I don't want to get down the road and end up with 15 transient rentals in your block because we didn't have anything in place to regulate that.
You're already that way right now. Every, if I'm not mistaken, every residential business on Monroe there, all the way around, can already come up here, and they're allowed to get a transient rental permit, right? Am I right on that?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay. Already have a block by the...
And that's all the more reason to put some regulations in place so we don't have blocks and blocks and blocks.
Well, yeah, but I think it's, I think it's a perfect block, in my opinion. If you already have one that's set up for that, right, and it's really close to downtown, and we're talking about putting a convention center in, and we're talking about, you know, taking people over on the ferry, we want to be able to provide that housing downtown to keep those dollars in town here for the business owners downtown. So, the way I think of it, that would be a good solution. That's a perfect block for it, if you zoom out. So, I just, I like to spar a little bit with you.
Sure, sure. And, and, and...
I want you to disagree a little bit.
And it's not about you, it's just, you seem like a quality individual, and you're doing a nice job in town. I appreciate that.
And I'm glad you came back up, because I had, I thought I understood you to say, and I wish I had clarified it for my own satisfaction, you are operating...
Yeah, we, I mean...
A business already. And whether you do transient rental, what you're saying is, it makes sense to make your particular piece of property residential business, especially in light of the surroundings.
And I do it over...
That's what I wanted to clarify. That's what I thought.
Like, this isn't just happened in six months. I've been doing this for over a decade.
Okay.
And, you know, I've done other things, but, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, what is that business?
I do video production and photography.
Okay.
Okay. So, and it's not like it just happened six months ago. I've been doing, building this up for a decade, so...
And I thought I understood that, but I thought, I think it's important to bring out, and that fits in residential.
Yeah, that's what I came with other things. Yeah, and that's why I came back up. And it was...
No. Thank you. Any other comments?
Real quick, I would just say that I think that this is different than the overlay district, and I think that this process is something that we've done before. I'm thinking of a place on Columbus Ave that we rezoned from residential into residential roadside business, and I would agree, this fits far more with the neighborhood than that one. I know you weren't with us when we did that one, Mr. Pajali.
The city long property? Is that the one you referenced?
No, no, it's, it used to be like a dentist office on the west, west side, yeah, the west side of the block.
Not too far from Perkins Avenue.
No, 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 it's way out.
Oh, I wasn't here.
Almost a Perkins Avenue.
About a block, yeah, almost a Perkins Avenue. It's got a long sidewalk to the...
And to me, you know, zoning changes that happen because they fit more with the neighborhood is different than the overlay district. The overlay, yeah, we don't have a clear path on this, but I think this is the clear path on a zoning change, and I agree this would make sense.
I appreciate that observation. Any other comments before we call the question?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waylon, I mean, Mr. Zulov.
I would be remiss if I didn't point out that another option, I think, I could be wrong, but I think another option would be neighborhood business, but in this particular case, I think residential business is a perfectly fine option too. The trouble with residential or neighborhood businesses, that would in addition require a variance?
Conditional use permit.
Conditional use permit, to do the, so this is more expedient. I don't know that one or the other is more fitting. Any thoughts on that, or none?
Yeah, if I may, staff believes that this is more fitting, first off, because it is contiguous to residential business, in a sense. Secondly, local business allows more uses, so this would accomplish the transient option, and, as the applicant had said, possibly is business, and then also not allow more extensive uses to be in this part of the neighborhood.
I happen to think that transient is appropriate for this particular property, I think. I don't necessarily, I don't think it necessarily follows that allowing more uses when surrounded by residential properties is necessarily a good thing, but I'm fine either way, and I'm fine with this, this choice. Thank you.
Any further comments or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is a public hearing, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Tim, I know who you are, but just for the record, would you state your full name and address?
Timothy H. Schwanger, 362 Sheffield, Sandusky, Ohio, born and raised. The question I have, I have a couple questions on the map here. So, the area in red is currently zoned as what?
That is commercial service.
Commercial service. And the area in orange, the property in question, is going to be zoned what?
It would be residential business, which would match the corner properties on Perry and Monroe, the brown on the screen.
Okay. How many people were notified at this public hearing?
There's a notification process. It's any property within 300 feet of the parcel highlighted here.
And you have no numbers on how many were sent out? 10, 15, 20, 100?
A numerical value. Our clerk would probably have that, but like, we mentioned, she's not here.
Okay. Here's the danger, folks. We've already heard from Ms. Blair that she gets calls every day about wanting transient rentals all over the city of Sandusky. This gentleman here, not only is he talking about maybe this property here, but also extending all the way, entire block, because it's barely attached to the area in red. I don't know how many people live in that duplex right now, maybe, let's say it's four on each, in each part, let's say eight. We go to transient rental, we're losing eight Sandusky residents, okay? And I can give you the phone number to the Census Bureau. I called, and they said transient rentals are not counted in the census. We're already at 25,000 people, which is the bare minimum to qualify for X amount of dollars from the federal and state government, because we're at that 25,000 level. If we get to the point where we've got 1,000, 2,000 transient rentals in the city of Sandusky, times three people in each one of those units, you're looking at 6,000 people that you lost. So, I would suggest to this committee, since you've talked the last two meetings about needing additional regulations and rules, you might want to consider putting a moratorium on transient rentals until staff can get their act together, and this board can get their act together and come up with rules and regulations, instead of waiting for this big wave that's coming right now, and they all get approved, and all of a sudden, we're saying, "Well, how come we don't have any rules and regulations? What do we do now?" Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
If I may, I do want to clarify that there are transient rental rules and regulations for the city of Sandusky. There are ordinances, there are policies, there are procedures, there's a rental application, there's a fee you have to pay. There is a regulatory regime in place currently. It is not a free-for-all. There are only certain places you can locate transient rental for our zoning, and also there are only certain places you can, and even if you can locate transient rental in that place, there are still rules and regulations, including our code department doing walkthroughs and other things. So, there is regulatory oversight, this process, just to clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the clarification. I guess what I would say is, we need to look at those rules and regulations and maybe refine them and tune them up a little bit.
Could I also make a comment through you, Mr. Chairman? Yeah. A few weeks ago, 60 Minutes had a program on about housing, and what they were saying was that it's coming very difficult for people that want starter homes to buy homes, because companies and individuals are buying up these starter homes and using them for transient, for rentals, and to rent them out and do things like that. And if that starts taking place in Sandusky, where there won't be any starter homes for individuals to buy, because companies are buying up these starter homes, we're going to be in trouble. So, I just want to throw that out there, because it's happening all over the United States, not only in Sandusky, but it's happening all over the United States.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Zulov.
To concur with Mr. Jackson's warning, we already have businesses doing that in Sandusky. It's, we think of it as a mom-and-pop kind of thing, but there are businesses, business models that simply acquire properties and both rent out single families long-term and short-term. So, it's something we have to think about. We can't just follow the stereotype that, hey, it's just, you know, somebody buys the house next door and rents it out, or somebody rents a few rooms in the back of their house. So, but I believe we're thinking about that, and I know that the staff is thinking about that too. They're well aware of this, and they follow it closely. Regarding our law director, Brendan Hiles, comment about that we do have regulations, it's true, and I agree with all that assessment. I'm always up for improvement. I would add to that, that we write in the legislation, and legislation doesn't always include this, is, I think, a pretty lucid rationale and criteria for accepting transient districts. It's there. Could it be improved? I don't know. I think, I think maybe it could. I'm up for it. I think it's pretty good the way it is, but not all legislation as lucidly explains the intent and the criteria for making changes, and this one does.
Thank you, Mr. Zulov. Chair, again, we know each other, but would you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Westpool. I live in 1939 East Old Gate. What I want to say is, you're talking about your, I don't have any problem with this particular, what's before you. The general discussion about, do we have transient rentals in general, and that if we put one here, that means we're going to lose all kinds of other houses? Can be managed by whatever you put in as rules and regulations for where we allow them at. I agree with Ms. Castile, that, yeah, we need to decide, where will they be advantageous, and where will they not be, and work from that perspective. And one thing I wanted to add, when you're writing your new regulations, if you would consider, and I don't even know if it's allowed, the lawyer can talk about it, but I think we would like to see something that addresses lead pipes, lead paint, and bringing houses up to that kind of standard, before we allow them to do that. That's a place that we can start, if that's legal to do, and this is a place to start that conversation.
That's a super point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments before we call the question? Or, wait a second, we need a motion first, though. I'm sorry. Is anybody prepared to make a motion? Let's put it that way.
I will. I'll make a motion.
Of order, wasn't a motion made?
I don't know.
I don't think so. Was a motion made?
Last meeting, he was going to, but I...
Okay, all right.
Did you actually?
Just to be safe, let's make a motion, and...
Was there any staff? I recommend approval of the zoning change.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Zulov seconded it, okay. Any, now, any further discussion on the motion and the second? Hearing none? I will have one point of discussion. Again, this is a zoning change to, with a zoning change to a similar use in the neighborhood. At least presently, the applicant lives in one of the units himself, and I'm speaking to some of the comments from the audience, and I'm presuming the other one is rented out, and he could move to a different location, but everything I'm hearing personally seems a logical reason to approve this application, so that's the way I'm going to vote. But that's my last comment, so if anybody has anything else to say, speak up, or we'll call the question. Okay, call the question.
Mr. McGory?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Castile?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
No.
Mr. Waylon?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulov?
Yes.
Appears to have passed. Appears to have passed. Thank you. Going down the agenda. So the commission has set a public hearing to consider a transient rental overlay district for the following parcels: along East Washington Street, and I don't have the addresses, so maybe I do need to read the parcel numbers. 56-01210.000, the next parcel, 56-00444.000, and the next parcel being 56-0518.000, the next one being 56-00747.000, next one being 56-000.9, I'm sorry, 56-00097.000, next one being 56-01158.000, next one being 56-00643.000, next one being 56-00585.000, next one being I believe these are all on the south side of East Washington Street. Am I correct on that? And I would ask staff to educate us on the details of that application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And this is an application for approval of a transient overlay district.
This is a public hearing to consider a transient rental overlay district on East Washington Street, which I'll talk about the, where that is located. The public hearing was set by the planning commission last month based on a petition submitted to the commission by a resident of the, in one of the parcels. So currently, the way that a new transient rental overlay district is created is for either planning commission or city commission to initiate that. The first step is a public hearing. So tonight, the planning commission may table, may approve the district as the boundary is drawn, may elect to expand the district, shrink the district. It is, this is a public hearing set by this body for the consideration of an overlay district in this general location. The boundary is not set, that's up to you, if you'd like to move it forward tonight. If you choose to move it forward, it would go to city commission as drawn, or if you would see a new, more parcels added, the next step would be a hearing at city commission.
Would that be another public hearing then?
That would be another public hearing. So may I talk about the parcels next? Okay. So the parcels are located on the south side of Washington Street, across from the downtown business zoned block that is currently under construction for the Crimis Grocery Store property, where there will be a food hall and the distillery in that block. It is currently zoned residential to family, and it is, the district is drawn, was drawn by the petitioner, by the resident, who lives on the corner Hancock and Washington Street. And so it contains only the parcels that face Washington Street between Hancock and Franklin, as was drawn by the petitioner and set. So all public notices were sent within 300 feet of the parcels that you are seeing on the screen tonight. If you look east and west, this is the character of the area, so it's a historic character, densely, single-family, multifamily homes along this corridor on a fairly busy street. It's Route 6, and staff has not prepared a recommendation for you, since this is something that was set by the planning commission. The last conversation from last month, I'll remind everyone that the commission talked about wanting to have property owners have some way to get on the agenda for a public hearing, and signatures were provided. So seven out of the 10 parcels' signatures were provided to staff along with this boundary. So it was like 90% of the property owners agreed with this. We have heard several concerns from owner, property owners nearby. We encouraged them to attend, so we have heard some concern. I think there were three calls of concern that staff received. And finally, I'll just mention, you had said you'd like a path forward for more public hearings to be considered, and a general consensus was shown that more districts, making districts easier to place on the map wasn't as much of a concern as the overall cap of a number of transient rentals that we will have plenty of time to get to. I don't think we're going to suddenly get a landslide of, you know, hundreds of transient rentals if we see some zoning changes. So that is something that staff is working on. But this particular hearing is for these, a district, a transient rental overlay district on the parcel shown on the screen. Mr., I just had a question.
If I could.
I...
So am I understanding that all these parcels front on East Washington, but it's not a flat back line? So those are just in the center where it's a deeper back line? Those are just deeper parcels? Is that correct?
Correct. So the jagged line that's on the back is just following the backs of those parcel lines. The only parcels that are included in the drawing are places that face Washington Street.
Okay. And this is a public hearing on a request to approve that area as a transient overlay district? Just to be clear, if that were approved, it does not require anybody to engage in transient rental in that district. And if one chose to do so, as was, I think, I think was already pointed out, there are some very strict requirements to even, to fit into transient rental. Just because you're approved in an area, you still have to meet other guidelines and requirements, evaluation of property, off-street parking, is a fee involved, I mean, it's a process.
Correct, including inspections.
Ms. Castile, you had a question?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. This is a question for Erin. Did the people that called specify what their concerns were exactly? Or was it just the general concerns for, you know, Airbnbs and the party and music, the typical things that people think might happen in these cases?
Mr. Oaks, was there a sense, can you give us a sense of those calls?
Yeah, sure thing. So the main consensus of the calls was just taking away of the historical character, the neighborhood character of this block. That seems to be the pattern. There were, one of the three was more concerned about the partying or the music or the people coming and going, but I think all three consensually agreed that the neighborhood change of character was the main concern.
Okay. And then, do I understand, is it 11 parcels in this potential overlay district?
I believe it was 10.
10?
Nine.
Nine? Okay. I can't count, I can't see. Nine altogether. So playing off what Pete said, this doesn't mean that everyone in these nine parcels has to have an Airbnb or a transient occupancy, but it does mean that they could, correct?
They could be allowed to apply for a permit to...
Thank you.
...operate as transient rental. There are 10 parcels on the agenda and on the screen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Zulov.
For the staff, I looked and I looked again. It looks like the only thing in the packet is the one page on this. I don't see a report. I'm just finding the one page.
We did not write a report for this.
Thank you.
So we made sure, we wanted to get that map in your hands.
Good.
You had it to reference, but the staff did not prepare.
So I just wanted to assure myself that I'm not missing something. Very good. I'd like to point out that this seems on its face to be an appropriate proposal, or at least not an unreasonable proposal, especially because of the dominating uses across the street of commercial, transient, or at least multifamily. So I think that, that the hearing is appropriate, and if anyone's here to express an opinion on it, I'm anxious to hear about it, but...
I'd like to make sure, are there any more questions from the commission to staff before we ask members of the audience pro or con to speak?
Well, I think staff said they hadn't made any recommendations, so...
No, I just didn't know still if any of you had any further questions.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. I guess at this point, I would ask members of the audience, since this is a public hearing, to stand up or raise your hand and we'll call you up. Sir, come on up and...
Do you have to swear in a public hearing?
Hmm. It's not an adjudication hearing, I don't think so.
A man just got up here this evening and said, "We're losing this residence," and everybody wants to do a transient residence instead. If we keep that and we develop that into some kind of a lower-cost housing, we could promote it for families. And I think that we should do that to increase our cities. Now, I do own some property that's zoned for transient, bed and breakfast, that sort of thing. I would not rent it to a single soul because they throw trash in the street, they have no respect for the property, and that's what I see. I see it on a weekly basis, only on the weekend. Now, we have strict regulations on who does what and when, but there's nobody on the weekend to enforce any of them. Absolutely nobody from the city. Everybody goes home for the weekend.
Sir, I'm sorry, I don't remember your address. You were up here before.
Pardon me, I didn't hear you.
I don't remember your address. You were up here before. I think you said Perry Street, did you say?
This other man said that we're losing these residents and if the city drops below 20,000...
What's your address?
Your residence address.
Where do you live?
On Perry Street, and I also have a residence on Lockwood.
Thank you.
And that's right in the rental district. People tried to buy that for a bed and breakfast because that's a popular area where the boat is.
On Lockwood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they've been trying to buy the place for years. I won't sell it and I won't rent it for any reason because I see what happens across the street every weekend when I go there.
Do you rent?
I don't rent a single thing that I own.
Okay.
I just pay taxes on everything, and I only eat pieces of property.
They're just vacant. They're vacant.
What?
They're vacant.
No, not really. We use the property. The family uses the property. We have boats, they stay it on the weekend, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
You have any...
This is why I say, if we're getting to the point where we're no longer getting consideration as having 20,000 residents, why don't we come up with a plan, seeing that you people are the planning commission, to try to promote some single-family residents? This is a nice place to live, or I wouldn't live here.
I think that that is probably a goal that we can work towards. I don't know exactly what the solution is. I think probably well-paying jobs would help, but...
I don't know about that, right. But what I'm trying to say is, everything becomes a rental, nobody's going to take that lot next door and build a house there, especially a young family with two or three children. They don't want to subject their children to those transients. All they do is party. They throw beer bottles and everything around in the yard, yet they still have garbage cans. They don't use them.
I would consider that a generalization.
Yes, it is a generalization.
I've had some long-term tenants myself that...
Oh, those are long-term. I'm talking about the weekend cedar pointers.
I think that's a pretty common assessment.
We don't have to...
Okay. Do you have anything further to add?
That's all I have to say. And I didn't know that the city was losing that many residents until I heard this other man speak about it. I had no idea. I just came here to listen.
You have other people?
Thank you.
Anybody else care to speak? Come up to the microphone? Please state your name, hi, state your name and address for the record, please.
Terry Brown. I own a house, 413 East Washington Street. Pretty much catty-cornered from what, where you're talking about here. I'm in favor of the, making this a transient housing, this area across the street from me. I don't look at this transient housing in the way that I think other people do. I oftentimes travel, and I have four grandchildren and two kids, and we like to, we like to rent houses. We stay in a little hotel room, and we like to cook when we go on vacation, and we like to take money when we go. And we spend a lot of money where we go. So I think that this, there's more to this story than just these kids coming and drinking beer and leaving beer bottles everywhere. It's just not, that's not necessarily the case all the time. And there are a lot of families that want to come up here. Sandusky has a lot to offer. There's a lot of entertainment options here, and in addition to that, I actually own a business. I own a restaurant, and I'm telling you, this is good for businesses, which is good for the city in general, people spending money. And it's good for the labor because these businesses, they definitely would need to hire more workers, you know, the more, the more business, especially in the summer. So just in summary, I'm for it.
I'm inclined to agree with a lot you just said, but I do have a question, just so I'm clear on it.
Sure.
So is your residence near but not in this?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the house I bought, I'm totally remodeling it. I'm spending a lot of money to get this house. I don't even know if it was condemned at one time. I had heard that it maybe had been condemned. So I'm paying for it as I go, but it's, it's a process for sure to get this, this thing. We've got it gutted and...
This property, is this your residence or an investment property?
It's mine.
Okay. Where you live and plan to live, or were you turning it into an investment property?
I wouldn't mind the option of being able to...
Thank you.
...use this.
Yes.
In that, in that manner, not all the time, though. You know, I have family that would like to come up here, you know, and see me here and...
Sure.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Ma'am, one last question.
Yes.
You're not fearful if this were to be approved?
Not at all.
No, I think she was maybe thinking about doing hers.
Well, I wouldn't, I don't know for sure. You know, I'm not saying that I would or would not.
But you'd like the option being open for the area.
I do this all the time. I'm going to New Jersey this summer with 20 people, and we're renting a house. It's a big family reunion on the shore, and we have to pay a huge sum of money as a deposit to make sure that when we leave that house, it's left in the order that we arrived at. People are not coming in here and trashing these houses. They're going to lose all their deposit money. It's just foolishness to think that.
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody have questions of this lady? Well, okay.
No, I do have a comment through you, Mr. Chairman. I like the differing, the differing opinions we're seeing here because it's pointing out both sides of the coin for me. Like Joe mentioned, he came, he's in this city because of what's happening, the investments. We're hearing a lot about the growth of the city. Then we hear Tim, who's talking about the people who already live here, who lived here when it wasn't up and coming, who can't hardly afford to, they can't afford to buy a house to own it, and so they have to rent. And so for every overlay district, for every transient occupancy, we have to remember that these are potentially losses of regular residents, of regular people who can't afford to purchase homes, can't afford to pour a bunch of money to renovate and make it nice. Do we have to find a happy medium for the growth and the progress of our city? Absolutely. But I like that we have both sides of the coin here because it's important that we don't forget, as we try to continue to grow our city to this amazing place that it is, that we have people who have lived here generation after generation who could be negatively impacted as well, and we want to make it a good place for them to live and to stay as much as we want to welcome outsiders. And that's, that's my comment.
Thank you. Sir, you want to come up to the microphone?
Yes.
State your name.
My name is Bob Newton. I'm a Sandusky High School graduate, 1970. I, four years ago, with my wife Linda, bought a house on 308 East Washington Street, and that's right in the middle of this overlay that there is being... that's right in the middle of this overlay that there is being proposed. And I want to say, we're absolutely opposed to it. And here are some reasons why. You know, we moved in this, we moved in that area because we love the neighborhood. You could walk downtown, we could go to the farmer's market, we have a boat at Dock of the Bay. And it was all just close and it just felt good, a nice neighborhood. And now I see that maybe this neighborhood's going to be torn apart. There's a lot of issues about Airbnbs. Some of them have been already stated. Parking, parking on that street is already very tight. There's neighbors that are already complaining about 333 Washington Street, the big blue building. Parking over there already is getting to be an issue and it hasn't even, isn't even in full swing. I heard about the apartment building on the corner, on the south side, Hancock and Washington Street being purchased. I'm not sure if that's going to go Airbnb or not. That's going to contribute to parking issues. It's just going to make matters worse. And it's going to be a mess as far as parking. Another issue is noise. You know, Airbnbs are occupied by people on vacation. When I go on vacation, I party. Don't you? I mean, I have some beers, you know, we have a good time and everything. If I have an Airbnb on either side of my home, people are coming in every weekend, every day. And they're coming out there, they're partying, having a good time, you know, and making noise and starting fire pits and smoke all over the place. It's going to happen. Not all Airbnb people are going to do that, but it's going to happen. There's no doubt about it. Picture this, I'm sitting in my backyard trying to relax, people are partying next door, both sides, like I said, fire pits. Does that sound like a place that you want to live? I don't think so. Safety's another issue. You know, you always hear about the horror stories and those are the exceptions rather than the rule, and I understand that. I've been a property owner all my life and I know how that goes. But these are crazy times. I have a house in Cincinnati. There's an Airbnb down there. This past summer, there was a shootout there, okay? Do people really care about these properties? A lot of them do, but not everybody. Who are these people that are going to be moving in next to me every weekend? Who are these people? I don't know. I'm not sure I want to, you know? Another issue is, and this is contrary to what was just recently said, is this, Airbnbs are taking money out of hotel motels, business pockets. Every time an Airbnb's rented, that's money that they don't earn. So it affects local businesses year-round, not just in the summer when people are here to party, go to Cedar Point. It's a year-round effect. And the last thing that I heard mentioned today also in my concern is urban flight. You know, already two residents on the block decided that, in this area, decided they wanted to move to Perkins and rent the Airbnb, okay? People are moving out. People are moving out because they see the money that they can make off of that, but they don't really think about the implications that people that are left behind or the impact that it has on the city. And what we're doing really is hollowing out the urban core by approving more and more Airbnbs. I don't think we want to hollow out the urban core. I think we want to put more people in the urban core, not less. The thing about renters is, I've had rental properties all my life, some good, some bad renters, but most renters are there permanently and they're neighbors and you get to know them. And they can be good people and they are good people. Airbnb people coming in, I don't know who they are, I don't know what their background is, I don't really want them. You know, the problem with Sandusky historically has been, what do you do in the winter if you have a business? Where is your business going to come from? And the more people that move out of the city and then turn their properties into Airbnbs, that's the less support that the businesses that are in Sandusky year-round are going to have. And I don't think that's the way to go. My wife doesn't think that's the way to go either. And I have a petition here that's signed by, I'd like to submit, it's signed by 22 people. These aren't people, I wasn't in front of Kroger getting people assigned this petition. I wasn't hanging out doing that. I went door-to-door in the neighboring community. I went north on Hancock, I went north on the street on the other side.
Franklin.
Franklin. Franklin. And I went along Adams Street. I went door-to-door knocking on people's doors. I got 22 people that said, "We don't want this." I had two people, granted, everybody wasn't there, I had two people that were interested that said, "I'm in favor of it."
Should the gentleman give that petition?
Twenty-two people.
Should that go to the clerk, Mr. Chairman? The petition should go to the clerk?
I'm going to pass it around the table first. Just for the record.
We can accept it and add it to the record for the meeting, for the hearing.
I'm sorry?
We can accept it and add it to the record for the hearing.
Well, apparently it's going down the tables.
You've got to roll your eyes at a snake.
That's fine, we can still do that.
That's my feelings on the subject. I don't know if anybody has any questions of me, but I'm very passionate about the things that I said there. And having neighbors and not transients.
Mr. Chairman, is it Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Would it be more tolerable in your neighborhood if, say, there was only 20% of the houses could be Airbnb? Would you be willing to?
Depends if that 20% was on either side of me.
Well, right, right. But I'm just asking to see, rather than the overlay, if there was a way to come to a compromise for some people.
I understand where you're coming from. I just think it's tearing, it will tear the neighborhood down. I don't think it will improve it by any means.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the gentleman's comments, but it looks like we're getting other people that want to speak.
Okay. I don't mean to take up all the time, but.
First, last off, does anybody have any questions of me before I give up the microphone or anything?
Anybody have any questions?
No, we get your part of you.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Hi, guys. My name is Andrew Mulry. I live at, or I own 302 East Washington. I'm one of those two families that he mentioned and those, I believe it's only nine parcels that are moving to Perkins. We outgrew our house. I bought the house in 2017 and I watched the neighborhood flourish. I've seen, you know, Bida, we've got the distillery, we've got the grocery store across the street. I mean, I can sit in my living room, or sit on my front porch, and I see the main bus bane that takes everybody around, the whole city is right there on Washington and Wayne Street. I mean, we're a block away from everything. I mean, I guess they do talk about residents leaving. The reason we want to do Airbnb is because my wife and I, we love it downtown. We go to all the, you know, all the party at the piers and everything. We're involved with a lot of stuff and we enjoy the town. We want to keep the house. We feel like if we sell it, we wouldn't be able to buy back in in 15 years when our kids are in college. So we want a way to keep the house and we also would like a way to enjoy it ourselves. And, you know, we do, you hear horror stories, I guess. I mean, realistically, I see the tenants that, in the past five years, that live on the street, the people that actually live there month-to-month and rent long-term, it's trashier than if you had people. I would be there every week, cutting my grass and cleaning up and getting ready for the next person. And when people aren't there, I would be there enjoying the downtown, the atmosphere. I mean, you guys are kicking in a lot of money into all these local businesses. For what? For us to not be able to bring people in to enjoy them? I mean, you got Dora right there. It's just kind of a no-brainer in my mind. I mean, parking, you can talk about parking anywhere, which you guys have heard about probably in every meeting for the past four years, from the pier to, you know, every project, there's parking complaints. So, I mean, realistically, you know, one of the main complainers or complaint-ins has a four-car driveway. So, I mean, it is, you know, either way, I don't want to get worked up here. I just, you know, I think we have a strong case in an area where it makes sense, so. And my full intention would be to rent it out, you know, make some money. I'm no business. I'm going to move back there someday with my wife and we're going to slowly but surely, as we rent it out, we're going to kick the money back into the house. You'll see a new roof on it within a few years. We'll paint it, we're going to do stuff. I mean, it's not like we're going to rent it out to 16-year-old birthday parties unattended. So I don't know, you know, that's just, that's my.
Thank you. Any questions for this gentleman? Thank you.
It's all fine if you want to move to Perkins.
Property tax downtown.
No.
Yeah.
Come up and. Sure.
He wasn't supposed to laugh at that.
Yeah, Dave Bowie, 320 East Washington Street. Yeah, and we, of the people on that block, there is only one person that's not in favor of it. And to be honest, everything, and I respect his opinion, okay? But everything that he said, I mean, he's going to have that 50 feet from his front door, right? Because that, if the food hall goes in as anywhere near planned, he's going to have noise, that whole area there is going to be an outdoor deck. So, I mean, it's going to overwhelm any party that may go on at a Airbnb. So, you know, why he would buy a place across from a business district if he had all those concerns, I'm a little baffled, okay?
So you live on that block and you are in favor of?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, I'm, as it turns out, other than my neighbor who's never there, okay? I'm now the person that's owned property on that block the longest. I've had it about 15 years. And what that neighborhood is now compared to what it was then is night and day. And I'd like it to stay that way. And so for no other reason, I'm in favor of it. So, I mean, that's.
My question, so do you live in the property now or do you rent?
So I'm a seasonal resident. I'm up here in the summer.
Okay.
So I live, I live.
So you, and you will continue to live there?
I was going to continue to live there. I don't currently have any plans. I remember you at one of the meetings saying that you lived in a district, but you didn't want to do that much work. Well, I, that's kind of where I'm coming from. So, yeah, so I'm very much in support of it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, did I hear you correctly? You only live there in the summer?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask for clarification.
Yeah. Only in the summer?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I get here, I'm here now.
And then do you leave it vacant in the winter?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. Do you ever rent it out during the summer at all?
No, no.
Thank you. Get in line.
My name is Craig Heck. I'm a lifelong resident at 22246 Street in Sandusky. And I've had a duplex at 304 East Washington Street for 24-plus years. I just want to preface, in terms of condition, I've poured, I would say arguably, more money into my rental down there than my others, I'm a small-time operator, than what I, compared to what I make on a percentage than a lot of people. And I don't knock anybody for that, but I'm just going to say that. And so I've put a lot of money into this duplex, like my other three. And this has been for 24-plus years. I want to also just say for the record, I respect everybody's opinion, whether I agree with them or not. I'm not going to get emotional about it. If I don't have the best argument and I can't get my desired answer, I guess too bad for me. I'm just saying that, you know? But I want to address the issue about, I think I've, over the years, as a landlord, I'm pretty savvy in terms of what's been going on in the street. I consult and deal with tenants in a wide range of issues, you know, drugs, crazy things. I mean, I don't even want to get into it, police and everything like that. I've gotten into all of it. I've dealt with it. You know, it hasn't always happened immediately. But the reason I'm saying this is with, I think, number one, there are good rules and controls in place for transit rentals right now. I believe in what is established, number one. And number two, I believe with local city ordinances, I believe, you know, when you have issues with people, whether they're Airbnb people or regular tenants, that there are enough local ordinances that are in place to take care of these issues, to deal with either the landlords or the people that commit the issues. So I, I'm just relating this to, you know, right now I have tenants, like I can say my neighbor next door, Andy here at 302 East Washington, you know, he can vouch for this, you know, with regular tenants, you know? And just the most recent one, you recall, before I got a great tenant in there, which I embrace him all over the place, an awful situation. You know, I don't want to get into the details, but it took me some time to deal with it, but my neighbor, you know, he dealt with me in a rational way. I know his concern. And eventually I got it taken care of. This is with regular tenants, you know, that we all, some of us have down that street or anywhere else. What is it, 70% plus rentals in the city of Sandusky that we have already? We deal with a wide range of issues. So we've got Airbnbs, well, you know, how much worse can it be, you know, with Airbnb tenants? We've got controls in place. I'm in favor of this. I'm not saying I want to do transit right now, but I want to be given the opportunity to create the highest and best opportunity for me as an owner if I want to sell this down the road that I can say, "Hey, you could convert this into, do an Airbnb." I should have that opportunity as an owner for the highest and best value and opportunity as an owner. And this goes for anybody else on the street. I just want to say, you've got the same opportunity if you want to sell someday for your, you can, that's a platform to pitch to a buyer, to create the best value for you, you know, as a seller. But I don't know what else to say, but I'm in support of it. I think there are good controls in place. I don't, I, I'm not going to repeat myself.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask you to check that 70% figure. I don't think that's correct, is it?
Is it?
Yeah, I'm asking Ms. Blair, Craig.
My understanding is that we're, there's about 46%.
Forty-six percent.
Of our households are rental in the city.
Okay. Next up.
Just for the record, Craig.
My name is Chris Whedle. The 403 East Adams. That address might not mean much to you, but this is the house that Mrs. Parker bought 2012 to Sheriff's Sale to keep it from being demolished. Before she died in 2015, she had improved the exterior of the home. I purchased it upon her death and I finished the interior renovation. If I could draw your attention to the map. This whole corner right here is the house. One of the first things that was said was, "This is a historical district." It's recognized the city as being a historical district. My house is a National Register house. I went through the process of, after I purchased the house, to come before this commission and other commissioning boards, to get this house approved as a bed and breakfast and a transit rental. That was done. But what I was told was, "I have to provide off-street parking." I was told by the city, "I have to provide off-street parking." Of the nine properties on that street, only three can park cars off-city property. Only three.
That's not accurate.
Oh, there's more than three driveways? Excuse me.
Yeah, I'm going to.
Stop him.
You're speaking.
No problem, no problem. There's access to the back.
There's three driveways in the nine properties. The street's already full of cars now. On our house, we're on a corner lot. Nightly in the summer, all but two are taken up now by parking by neighbors that have duplexes. I'm saying that if you're going to have rules, be consistent. If you're going to require. by parking, by neighbors that have duplexes. I'm saying that if you're gonna have rules, be consistent. If you're gonna require some people to have parking for transit rentals, require all people to have parking for transit rentals.
I'm gonna ask you to stand there for a second, and I have a question for staff. Is that one, is off-street parking one of the requirements for tran- transit rental?
Off-street parking is a consideration in the permit on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Can I also clarify about the historic district? So this, this boundary is not within a registered historic district in the city. It has historic character, which was the comment that I was intending to make in the introduction.
The area we're considering are this gentleman's?
It is not in a registered historic district. So if you can see on the, on the zoning map on the top left, there's like a white line. That's the outer boundary of the downtown historic district. And that's really clearly seen on our zoning map. If anyone wants to take a look at that on our zoning map, there's another, we have two districts in the city that are bounded and, and they're registered locally recognized historic district. We have our downtown historic district, and there's the Cable Historic District that's down, uh, south on Wayne Street where it has the boulevard in the center of the roadway. Those are the only two places that are districts that are registered. There's also multiple properties that are individually registered in the city as historic.
I'm less concerned about the historic.
I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Than I am the, the issue of the off-street parking. So how is that determined on a case-by-case basis, based on how much volume there is with the people that live there on the street for parking, or?
How many units there are, whether there's, so how many units there are, and if there's on-street parking offered, similar to how we evaluate parking when we do a site plan and evaluation with the commission.
Would that same process have been applied to this gentleman's building?
My understanding is that would be. I believe that that application was processed by staff prior to either Mr. Oaks or I joining the city of Sandusky.
Sir, did, did you ever end up with, um, off, the appropriate off-street parking? Or how did you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, since we went here, it'd probably be better to let everybody have, have their say before, it would be more efficient to let everyone have their say. But since we've gone, uh, this direction, don't we, I believe the ordinance does require a, a parking plan, does it not?
That's correct.
Thank you. So, and I'd also point out that, at the time, the gentleman who's, uh, that's, that's a fantastic property, by the way. I envy the, uh, your.
Still could be yours.
Yeah, of course. Um, but, uh, at, at the time that you acquired it, I don't believe we had the transient, uh, uh, ordinance. So it was basically operating under different rules. And, uh, I have no doubt that you would have been permitted, who, if we would have found a way to address the parking, because everybody admires that property and its history, so.
Thank you. Well, has there been a parking plan submitted for this or not?
The, the, no, the parking, each, each property, when they, uh, apply for a permit, this would not allow anyone to just open their doors. This would allow people to apply for a transit rental permit. And each applicant would have to show how they were addressing the parking. And the permit would not be granted until, if and, until, uh, the parking was addressed. And there are many other requirements, too. So, uh, I would invite anyone who's interested. It's, the, uh, this, the ordinance is pretty well-written and pretty clear and not terribly long. Uh, it, it's pretty involved and detailed, but, but pretty readable. So I, I think people would, uh, who are interested, uh, should take a look, 'cause I think it's, it's a pretty good ordinance.
Well, I wish to apologize for calling it a historical district when it's just a historical area. You know, within my neighborhood, there are three underground railroad houses. Now, this is, this is a, an area with character. And one of the previous discussions you had here on the approval on Perry Street was the domino effect. You approved this whole block, half of the, one side of a whole block. What's gonna happen to the surrounding areas? And, and it was brought up about the old Crimis Building. That Crimis Building has been set and empty for years. And the only reason it's being developed now is because another developer has paid the taxes on it and sent his crew there to start working on it. So it was an error to say that when this gentleman bought his house, he knew he was gonna be across from an entertainment district. He knew he was across from a grocery store.
Mr. Chairman. Appreciate your open house, by the way.
I have a question. The, the house that you're presently living in, was that the, where the Fire and Symphony practiced before you bought it? That's, that's a different, that's a different house?
It was, uh, it was a Rush Sloan residence from 50, 1853. And it was in the Rush Sloan family till 1923.
Okay.
From 23 to 49, it was the Sandusky Business College. From 49 until the mid-'90s, it was a number of different Rush Homes.
Yes.
Hospital bought it to get the bed licenses. They mothballed it. Uh, two ladies bought it in 2000, in 98. Uh, they spent four years trying to renovate it. They sold it to another family, and they spent till 2012 trying to renovate it. But at that time, it had gotten in pretty bad condition. And Mrs. Parker bought it for $800, or $80,000 at a share sale.
Did you not offer it for, uh, to the community as an open house, uh, as a fundraiser?
We, we opened it, uh,
Yeah.
A year ago, I guess. We had a fundraiser there.
Thank you for that. That was a fantastic thing to do.
We raised over $4,000.
I'd like to reiterate what my colleague was just saying, that even if this gets passed, there's still gonna be, you just can't, aren't gonna be automatically be, turn your property into a, a B and B. Uh, they're gonna, there's regulations you're gonna have to go through before this takes place. This, this isn't just a free-frog. This gets passed, this doesn't be, okay, tomorrow I'm gonna open up. That's not gonna happen that way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
I'm Greg White, and, uh, I live at 334 East Washington. That's where the Symphony Orchestra, that's, that's my home now. And, um, the home used, as you, I think, long-term residents, and I'm, I'm newer to the city, no, that used to be a commercial property. It was, in fact, taxed as a commercial property. And, um, my introduction, when I moved here five years ago, was to meet a policeman who told me I was making too much noise. So anyone that's concerned about too much noise, here's an 11-page printout of city ordinances about noise. And the police department takes it seriously. I know I've been on the violating end of it. They're two blocks away. They respond immediately. And as far as I know, I'm the only miscreant who's made too much noise in the neighborhood. I was happy to see the house across the street, which is the Washington House, which was vacant for years, and a concern of mine, be purchased by the Zimmerman family and renovated into a nine-unit B and B. I've yet to see any beer bottles on the tree lawn. I've yet to hear any inordinate noise. I have seen some activity. I'm happy to see the lights on now. The house is secure. It makes the neighborhood more secure. Uh, next to that is a commercial property, hard to untitled, uh, the Crimis Grocery, on and on and on. The whole, the whole block is, is, is commercial. And I'm not sure that, uh, an occasional B and B on the south side is dramatically going to affect, uh, the character of the neighborhood. I'm in support of it. My house was owned by Mrs. Parker as well. God bless her. She saved it. It's on the national historic record, is Chris's home is. And to be able to turn part of it into a B and B would allow me to continue to restore it. I'm very much in favor of the neighborhood being allowed to petition to become a B and B property.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I appreciate the comments.
Thank you.
Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way, Sandusky. I think you're beginning to see the hornet's nest that this committee's gonna be in charge of, and the staff's gonna be in charge of, clarifying more detail in the regulations. I understand there's regulations now, but there's a lot of issues that need to be resolved. Uh, I will say one thing that, uh, or ask one question, actually, we, we talked to a couple of residents that actually, well, they actually don't live there. They live in a different community. But out of the other eight or seven, do we know how many of those folks actually live in those houses? I mean, are they owner-occupied, or are they also living somewhere else and they're renting those facilities right now? Do, do we have an answer for that, or do we know?
I personally don't.
The staff, the staff doesn't know for sure? Okay. I guess the question would be, and I'm gonna go back to the last meeting, March 23rd, of this planning commission. Uh, Mr. Bajali asked, who, you know, what, is it the residents that are signing these petitions? Or is it the, the homeowners? And he had a great idea, that it should actually be the homeowners that actually live there, that signed the petition, not, not someone who owns the property and may live in Perkins, here in Clyde, Columbus, you know, wherever it's at. And that might be a finer detail that you might want, need to work out as you do the details in the regulations. Do we know, um, so right now, looking at the map that's before you, if you approve that tonight, that pretty much opens up that entire block in the future, whereby I can come and ask for a property that's not within the yellow, to be rezoned for Airbnb or TRO, whatever, whatever you wanna call it. Is, am I correcting that assumption as well? Because it would be kinda what they call contiguous or?
That would certainly be an argument.
If that's a question, what's the question?
Well, if I own, let's say I own the property on this, uh, down towards Adams, I believe it's Adams, I can't quite see that. I'm still within the orange and I'm close to the yellow area. Am I able to come and say, hey, you know what, you did this for this area in yellow. I would like to also be included way down here at the corner of Adams and Hancock or Franklin.
Well, it would qualify under the ordinance as a contiguous property for expansion. That doesn't mean that it would be, uh, even proposed, much less mean that it would be approved. But it would qualify as an expansion of a district under the ordinance.
Okay.
As a contiguous property. And I know that you brought up that term contiguous before.
Right. So my, my point is, is that we're not just looking at maybe nine houses. 10 years from now, you might be looking at that entire block as a transient rental area, theoretically. And if, if I own a property inside the yellow, and I come to you for a transient rental, you really can't turn me down, right?
You would have to meet all the requirements. Uh, but I don't know that it's, uh, there's no arbitrary yes or no. If you meet, if you meet the requirements, it would, it would be approved.
And those, those requirements are in the regulations, or is it up to this body to say yes or no?
It's complicated.
It's complicated.
No, I'm, to answer that question, uh, people apply for a license, uh, 134132, the transient rental ordinance lists specific requirements that applicants must have. They have to pass inspections. They have to pay a registration fee. There's some other things. Parking plan was mentioned. It's, there's specific requirements that are listed out in the ordinance they have to meet. Um, if they are, meet those requirements and pay the, the necessary fee, they can get approved for a transient rental license.
And if I, if I do all that, there's no can, there is a, I will be approved.
If you can meet all the requirements.
That's what I'm saying. That's, that's exactly what I'm saying. So it sounds to me like maybe the answer is very simple here, and we're looking for difficulty instead of simple. You go with a cap. I know you guys talked about it la, at the last meeting, a cap citywide. I mean, here, Karen's done it. Karen recognized the fact that, you know, we don't want the entire city transient rental, so they capped it at 170. Obviously, Sandusky's bigger, so the 170 figure's not gonna probably apply here. But there needs to be some kind of a cap. And, and, and I'm talking about citywide. I'm talking about within the overlay districts. If you're saying 500, that 500 should include whatever's in the overlay districts, plus what goes on in the rest of the city, for the exact same reason why this gentleman here earlier said that we're losing residents. And we're losing the ability to purchase homes, folks like me that might, that make five figures, but I don't make six figures. I'm losing that ability now because rent's going up because of, partly because of Airbnbs. I've had two people contact me that told me that they are, have been asked, that they're evicted because their property owner's going Airbnb, Airbnb by the middle of this year. I've had another lady call me, and she said, my rent's going up because he knows I can't pay it. He told me that when I move out, I'm gonna turn it into an Airbnb. So there, there's a, there's a hornet's nest here, folks. You need to find a way to fix it.
Tim, Tim, hold on, hold on a second. I, I think staff and this committee, we've talked about all these things that you're talking about. This isn't, this isn't something that we haven't discussed and talked about. So it, it's, it's not that we're not working on it.
Mr. Jackson, what I'm saying is, the time of talk is over with. This, this transit rental started in the city of Sandusky two years ago. And I know we got new staff, but this is something that, that needs attention immediately. Not a year from now, not two years from now, but sometime within this year, it needs to be addressed. Because, as Ms. Blair said, she, she's getting, I mean, her phone is, her phone is ringing off the hook, according to her, on other people that either want an individual, or they want to expand a bigger, a big swath. And it needs to be fixed.
On the likely event that you watched the entire last meeting, which was, uh, long, but not as long as this one is going to be.
Well, let me see.
Uh, no, here.
Go ahead.
It, it, it's, I, I happen to agree with the cap. It's not simple. We learned because we discussed cap and what it means. Even that gets complicated. So, but, but we are, we're, we're, we're working on it. Uh,
Yeah.
And I think it's astute of you to point out that a cap is eventually going to be needed.
Well, I'm gonna tell you this. Some people stay at home and watch the Kardashians, okay? I stay at home and watch these meetings, or I listen to them while I'm working, okay?
It's strange.
Because I wanna be informed of what's going on in my community. Thank you very much.
I'd like to make one comment. You can, you can, you can stand or sit if you want, but, um, I mean, the way I see it, we could put, if we put a cap on right now and said, no more transit rental, inflation would still be going up, the supply chain would still be a problem, housing costs would still be going up, and much of our housing stock would still decline in quality because nobody'd be spending any money on it to fix it up. Those are all problems that all of us as citizens in this city have to face. And until we get some really decent paying jobs, um, I don't know what the solution is. But I don't think simply putting a cap on transit rental is gonna solve all those problems. And I, I, I quite honestly am concerned. I've seen more improvement in, maybe buildings in general. Um, uh, and I, and a lot of them have been turned into transient. The, the, the old warehouse building, that I don't know what kinda factory it was, the corner of, um, uh, Hancock and, and Scott, I think. Um, couple fixed that up, and they're turning it into, and, and, and they call it transient rental, but it's, they're, they're renting it to doctors and interns and things like that, that, and some of those doctors may end up choosing to locate here. So there, there's a relationship here all across the board. And, and, and I'm not saying this to be argumentative just to you.
Right.
I, I respect your, your feelings for the city. And, and I just don't know totally what the answer is, but the implication that, that we don't consider any of these things, we do. There's, I tell you what, there's, there's difficult stuff going on all over the country. I don't know how we figure it out.
Well, no, and I know you're under consideration, but this, this is of the utmost importance and it needs to be put at a top priority. And I don't wanna get off on it.
My point is, I don't think just putting a cap on transit rental is gonna solve all those problems.
Well, it's gonna solve our flight from Sandusky. It's gonna, it's going to, putting a cap will, will, uh, keep us within that 25,000 resident range of, you know, what we get from the state and federal government and other grants. That, that's what we're looking at. If we, if we still had a population of 32,000 like we did 20 years ago, and not 25,000 as we have today, that's right on that edge, then we might not be having this conversation, okay?
What if, I mean, what I see in my practice, what, what if those people can't afford to pay their rent anyway, and they get evicted, and the landlord's not getting the rent, so therefore the property's deteriorating? And a lot of those rentals are really borderline properties. And again, I'm, I'm, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying that simply retaining people, human beings within the city, if they don't have adequate jobs and can't pay their rent, and the, the property keeps deteriorating, um, I, I can't tell you the number of calls I get from, from tenants who say, the landlord's not from, from tenants who say, the landlord's not fixing this, the landlord's not fixing that, what do I do? So I don't know what the answer is.
Sometime we'll have a conversation, you and I, and I'll tell you what the answer is.
We're debating.
Yeah. It's a, we're talking, we're getting out into a different realm.
Yeah, yeah. I wanted to reply.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just like to comment on what Mr. Schwanger said. It's, it's not the staff. The staff is willing to sit down and talk about this. As I mentioned, Ms. Blair did a fine job on this white paper. It's us. We need to either make a decision to look at this and put some parameters in, or just move along as we're moving along. And I guess my final statement is, how did we get to this point? We got to this point with all this marginal rental and all these problem rentals because nobody did anything along the way to stop it or slow it down. All I'm asking is that we tread slowly. That's all I'm asking.
But there's, just my last comment. There should, there should be enough examples. You know, a lot of times we use examples of what other cities are doing, what other cities are doing. This, this is new to Sandusky, but this transient rental thing's been going on for years in Florida, North Carolina, South Carolina, all up and down the eastern seaboard. So there should be plenty of examples out there of what, what other cities have done. I mean, I just mentioned here, 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 and reckon, I don't know when they did their regulations, but here and recognized the fact that there's going to be a long-term problem with it, so they capped it.
I kind of like a combination of things, where it kind of grows organically and...
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So anyone who hasn't set up, had a chance to set up?
Anybody else who hasn't had a chance to speak first, that wants to speak.
Number, somebody can be outside the zone.
Or con.
Well, isn't all of this, what's the history?
Yeah. I think that's what we need to do.
That sounds reasonable.
It's going to be real quick.
Okay.
Real quick, just, just to get us back on what the public hearing is about, this particular group of parcels, and, and to clear up some disinformation that you all got, okay? 100% of these parcels have off-street parking. Six of them have parking from the front, including Greg. He's got enough to park the whole city, for God's sakes. And then the three parcels in the middle, we have parking in the back of our properties off of a public alleyway that runs between, from Hancock to Franklin, all the way, all the way across there. So 100% of these units currently have off-street parking. Not three, not three out of nine or anything like that.
There is an off-street parking off that alley, because those garages are not usable.
I'd like to just add one thing. Of the 22 signatures, I'd like to know how many are homeowners. I'd like to know who those people are. Are they residents, or are they people that...
On this petition you're talking about?
Yes. And are they given the same weight if you're a renter as opposed to a homeowner? Simple question on that.
Yeah. And, and we don't know the answer to that.
Right. Well, I want to bring it up, it should be...
No, no, I, I agree with the, the concern.
We have another agenda. We got to move it.
Yeah. I don't see any other hands raised to speak on this one issue. So, anybody care to make a motion?
I, I'm, I'm motion, I would make the motion, I would like to move that we table this question, give it some deliberation, and save it for the next meeting and move on to the next agenda item.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'd second that motion to table this.
Any discussion on that motion?
No, this is a Google poll.
Yeah.
On the motion or comments in general? I think, at this point, we got to say something.
On the motion to table. I, I will have a comment. I feel like we're kicking the can down the road.
And I feel like we're willy-willy.
A motion to table is not debatable.
I'm sorry, did two people spoke at the same time, but...
The motion to table is not debatable. You just have to, it moves in seconded, so you either table it or you don't.
Well, we have to vote on it, right?
Right.
And we are going to have some discussion and comments first.
There's no discussion on table, on the motion to table.
Okay. All right. You're the expert on Robert's rules.
Well, not really.
All in favor of the motion to table?
I would recommend taking a roll call vote.
Okay.
Mr. McGory?
I vote against tabling it.
Mr. Miller?
I vote against tabling it.
Ms. Castile?
I vote for tabling it.
Mr. Jackson?
I vote for tabling.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
How?
And Mr. Zulov?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen, I didn't hear you.
Yes, I voted yes.
You voted to table.
I voted to table. No, I voted no.
He voted against.
I voted no, against table.
Okay. So you voted against table, like, correct.
Did a clerk get that count?
I think it was four, three. Sorry. Four, three, four, tabling.
You, you're, you're...
I, I voted to table.
I don't, I don't know.
It passes. Yeah. So, one, two, three, four. That's tabled.
Okay. So there was a majority of...
Correct. Four votes for tabling it.
Okay.
Does that mean we are not going to discuss it any further?
We'll have to take it off the table.
Well, but I mean, now, like...
No.
Tabled.
None whatsoever?
None.
And I would like to know more about the...
The discussion generally moves to the next agenda item.
We got another fight at this moment.
Okay. The, the next item on the agenda, and this will turn into a long meeting, but a public hearing to consider a transient overlay, rental overlay district roughly bound by West Monroe Street to the north. Roughly bound by West Monroe Street to the north, Marquette Street to the west, Superior Street to the east, and then extending to the railroad tracks to the south. Perhaps we can be educated on this, if anybody has any attention left.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a similar public hearing for a different area of town. So the public hearing was set by the planning commission at the last meeting to consider a transient rental overlay district in this area. We had quite a bit of discussion about what, if there were appropriate boundaries on this area, what those boundaries might look like. On the left, you can see the zoning map. So there's general manufacturing in this area, but the entire outline that was brought to us by the petitioner is outlined in red on the left. After some discussion, particularly Mr. Dzulov pointing out that he thought it was appropriate for both properties that face a street to be considered within a district, rather than the district boundary being drawn by the center line of the street. Another comment by Commissioner Whalen was that he thought it would be more appropriate for this to extend a little further to the east if it were to be a district along Monroe Street. So in the right photo, you can see the darker area outlined in the center includes the boundary that the petitioner brought to us, and expands that to include the district being drawn by the backs of parcels fronting those roadways, roughly bound by Marquette to Seabert along West Monroe, across from Lions Park entrance. So the green bubble outline is all of the property addresses that received the public notice for this public hearing. So that, this notice was sent at the largest boundary that was discussed at the last meeting. This is what those two districts, or those two boundaries look like on this area. It's a residential character area, small footprint, single-family homes. There's quite a bit of vacant parcel, just grass lawns, and the entrance to the service building owned by the city of Sandusky, and bound by the railroad tracks at the south. Again, this is a fairly traveled corridor along West Monroe Street. It's bound on either side by railroad tracks, and then the bypass goes around. Lions Park has amazing water views, and the original petitioner points out the amenities to people that might stay in this area, it being a quiet place that's near to the Lions Park where they could go to the splash pad with kids, but also easily go west to Catawba or east to Cedar Point or east to downtown Sandusky. And again, staff did not prepare a recommendation or report on this. It was a hearing set by the planning commission to publicly discuss the potential for this. So the same thing would apply for the last public hearing that we just conducted. You could move to, move forward, you could adjust the boundaries, you could propose to move, to recommend to the city commission, or table it as the previous case was done.
Ms. Blair, I might add, if you would agree with me, that there is a fairly large marina pretty close to this area, too.
That is true. There's a marina, there's also a small RV, and several boat launches in this area. So there's a lot of tourist-based, you know, seasonal-based amenities in the, the close vicinity.
Thank you. Since it's a public, public hearing, I think before I request any discussion or comments or questions from the commission, I would say, or ask the, the audience who chooses to speak or wishes to speak pro or con against this particular application. Okay. Ms. Sir, you want to come up and introduce yourself and give us your address?
Before I start talking, the allergies are getting me, so I cracked my voice. I apologize. I hear you. My name is Dan O'Loughlin. I live at 3426 West Monroe Street. Lived there for 33 years. Raised my family, my grandkids. Very much opposed to this. This is a family neighborhood. Like you mentioned, family neighborhood, it's a thriving family neighborhood. People have lived there for decades. I did go around the neighborhood. I also have a petition that I submitted when we had that meeting in the fall. Forty-eight signatures against this. Not against people making money, but to put something like this and start this out there, and these are all family homes for the most part. There's rentals out there. I have some. But we just don't feel it's a good thing for the neighborhood. One lady that signed this has lived there for 70 years in her home, her whole life. Grew up there, had the home after her parents passed. We just don't feel creating a transient overlay district, basically now you're talking railroad track to railroad track. That's not going to be a good fit for the neighborhood. I mean, I don't know how else to put it, is that it's a family area. And like you said, if it's a thriving family area, why do you want to have transient rentals, people coming in and out?
Sure. Just a quick question. Did I understand you correctly? You own other properties that would potentially be in the overlay district as well?
I have one that, that borders it, yes.
So you could potentially benefit from this, and you're still opposed?
The house next door to me, I rent.
Thank you.
She's been there seven years.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of, there's rentals out there, but most of the people that rent out there have been there for years.
Sure. I've been renting my home for several years, too.
There's not a lot of turnover, not a lot of turnover out there, really, on rentals even.
I need, I need to ask a city attorney, I think we remember, at least I remember, that I cannot vote on this because for this applicant, as, as a private attorney, when he first questioned, how do I even think about this? But since, if, if I can't vote, can I ask questions that I think would bring good answers for everybody here that's going, going to vote?
No, you cannot participate in the discussion.
Okay, okay. Other than managing the...
Managing the vote, yes.
Okay, okay.
I mean, the description, is it now going from railroad track to railroad track, basically, in the north and south, down both LaSalle and Winnebago?
That is not what I meant to say. I was saying the, the area as a whole, there's railroad tracks. That's not, the boundaries on the screen are what...
That's kind of what the description sounds like, that, that's on the letter. That's why I'm asking. It kind of, because it says roughly bound, West Monroe Street to the north, Marquette Street west, Superior Street east, and then railroad track south. I mean, that's almost, sounds like railroad track to railroad track. In my, in my view, that's the way that wording sounds. That's not the way it was meant.
The bigger one on the right is superiors on the, superiors on the east, and the road to the north.
You might need to go back a slide.
No, it's not extending both ways. At least not, not the right, I mean, the original one was the one on the left, which is even smaller.
And see, again, it's been kind of been brought up, too. Okay, so we have that area. There's a lot of property that goes past Marquette Street up to Edgewater Drive, and a lot of it borders right on the bay. So that, that's another fear, you know, you approve this area, you know, I mean, my fear is to have that whole west end area become like this. Like I said, I rent, but I rent to long-term people that are part of the neighborhood. Rather not see in and out traffic, and, you know, they just did all that beautiful work at Lions Park, you know? And then we're, and like you said, parking, you know, I, I don't really want to have people parking in front of my home because then people can't come and visit me if, if there's not a sufficient parking area. And I know you said there's rules about that. But that's just kind of how I feel about it. And like I said, I did bring another copy of this. I gave you one in the fall. I don't know if you still have it, that I have it if you need it.
I do have that copy. It was...
Mr. Chairman, I'm kind of, I'm kind of hoping we can try to get people through before we engage in too much discussion, and then address it all at once.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Castillo, you got a comment, too?
I was just, this was just a comment to staff, just asking if we could be attached to those emails that are sent out to the neighborhoods, making them aware of these potential districts or what's going on. I just personally would like to read them.
So they are...
Unless they're somewhere else I can...
They're written, the public notices are written on, they're published in the newspaper.
Oh, okay.
And then they're paper letters that are mailed.
Yeah, that's what I, oh, paper, okay.
To Ms. Castillo's point, we, we've, we've discussed this before, and I, maybe even before your tenure, and, and we were kind of promised that when letters go out on a question, that we would get at least a PDF of it or something, so we knew what was going on.
Yes, I apologize. So you'd like to see that in your packet?
Yes, that's what I was trying to get at, yes. I know they're mailed, but if, if it's possible to, just to see, just to be in the know of what residents are getting.
Mr. Maldonado, come up and state your name and address.
My name is Jim Maldonado, and I own 3328 West Monroe Street. I also own the property directly behind it. That's 1011 Winnebago. Both properties have very big driveways. I'm actually pouring a brand-new driveway and a patio right now on the West Monroe House. And each have two parcels also. The one on, the house on Winnebago has its own driveway that you can get three cars. It also, on the separate parcel, has another three-car parking, right, asphalt parking there. So, get back to the points, what he said, his petition, he took his petition in the fall. I mean, it's almost summer here. I did a little, I did one that was a little newer, like a couple weeks ago, that I turned in, just devoted just to this specific area here. I got 15 homeowner signatures, four, two no's, and about four neutrals right now.
About four what?
Four neutral.
Okay.
They wanted to remain neutral. So I own other rentals in Sandusky. I have six other properties in Sandusky, all well-maintained. I operate them through Section 8 program. You know, I purchased the West Monroe House because I just saw the potential in the area, and, you know, and I started renovating it. And I started this process two years ago. So this is my meeting from two years now, working on this. So it's been a while. When I was out in the community walking around, getting petitions, I saw, I talked to about 60 to 70% of homeowners that I actually caught home. I went three times around. I received, like I said, the signatures, and overall, it was a positive feedback. I learned a lot about the neighborhood, that several houses needed to be worked in grass, a lot of grass wasn't even cut, there were a lot of renovations need. I think there was two houses that were actually condemned in this area, and which I believe that if you get a transient rental overlay district, I believe that that brings along immediately investors that fix these properties up immediately and go from there, like, exactly like I did. The house that, the house that I purchased was condemned when I bought it. There was 16 bids on it. I was the highest bidder. So after the community, I also went around to little businesses. I'll just read this. This was my petition. We, the undersigned businesses, agreed that the petition is a transient rental overlay district on the south side of West Monroe and Marquette Street to LaSalle Street directly across from Lions Park. We strongly, strongly feel that this would be a positive attribute to the city of Sandusky in a continued downtown revitalization. In addition to the petition brought to the community to be reviewed by the board, I also visited local businesses to have them voice their opinions on the... also visited local businesses to have them voice their opinions on the exact location, the exact location of this transient rental overlay district. I discovered, I discovered that it was overwhelmingly positive. The signatures I received are from the likes of Rick Hogrify, who owns H2 Properties, Noble Access, the Vice President of Toffs Dairy, which is right around the corner, Josh Meesler, the owner of Small City Tap House, Ca, Jeff Smith, a local business owner and hardware store, he's also the President of the Erie County Real Estate Board. Those were just some of the signature I received at this, saying that this exact location would be good for the city. And as far as, I think the pathway is going to make this not even on the west side anymore, it's more going to be basically centralized. The pathway, you can go out, walk right out of this, these properties, walk directly across the street, and you're at Lyons Park. They can go east at this location and get, they can ride a bike, walk right downtown to the city, you know, a short walk there, or they can go west, and they can go to the places that, you know, sometimes they get forgotten because they're on the other end of town, like Toffs, or ride their bike to Margaritaville, or go catch a trout at the, you know, the Trout Club down there, if they want to, you know, throw their pole in the stream. So, you know, I also agree with stricter rules with VRBOs. I think that, that will ease a lot of minds, actually, if there was more stricter rules. And with the profits that are, that the city would get from the bed tax, you could almost generate another job for a person just to continually watch these VRBOs in these areas, and then that would be their specific job, like a VRBO patrol, you know, that's, that's what they do. And that's all generated by the people who are doing VRBOs. Also, this property, I talked to Battery Park Marina, they're going to allow me to lease a dock at the, just for this property, stating that anybody that comes in can use that dock if they want to use it, just to promote boating, getting downtown, you know, taking the kids out in the water and showing them Sandusky Bay. So, you know, I'll be honest with you, I, I used to ride my bike there for my grandmas and play in the park, Lyons Park, when I was a kid. And, you know, we used to go there and play basketball and football, and you used to go there and you actually used to pick out beer cans and whiskey cans and needles and actually condoms that we saw before, sitting in that park when it was a trailer park there. It was a rough place. And, you know, I don't have a big name to change anything. Like I said, it's taken me two years to even have this meeting, but, you know, when I saw this house, I didn't see dollar signs, I saw a vision. A vision, that's why I stuck a lot of money into it, and, you know, my wife would, could have killed me, but, and then, you know, I had a vision, and then basically, it's the same vision that Sandusky had for Lyons Park and the pathway. I like to call it the jetway to get downtown and to get to the west. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Mr. Maldonado a quick question?
I have a question.
Did you, did you mention, do you live over there?
I do not live on West Monroe Street. I live in Perkins. I used to live in Sandusky on 1202 O'Gon's. I have, I have a maintenance 24 hours a day, seven days a week on all my properties. And actually, I had two more people with me that were going to talk, but they, I guess, they were got hungry or something.
You did offer some good comments. I liked some of your comments and-
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for appearing.
Ma'am, you want to come up?
I'm Sandra Kennedy. I have properties in Sandusky. I am a country girl.
Wait, we need your, you said your name, but your address, too?
Oh, I don't live in Sandusky.
But where is your residence?
Oh, Castalia.
What?
My address, address?
Yeah.
5516 Dale Road.
Okay.
Castalia.
In what city?
Castalia.
Thank you.
But I have property in Sandusky. I was a margarita girl, born and raised, and my husband is a country boy, so, but I do have concerns with Sandusky because I, my business was in Sandusky. I have rentals in Sandusky. First of all, I want to tell whoever doesn't know Jim, he is a union contractor that worked on building this building with his, the people who hired him. So he's not a fly-by-night, throw a shingle on and call it a, a rental or whatever. He does own properties that he keeps pretty strict control of, hires, the lawns maintained, the property maintained. And I have a question for Sandusky that I'm not aware of, because I, well, most of my information comes from the Sandusky Register, but does Cedar Point Roadway have transient rentals?
Some.
Some?
Some. There were some grandfathered ones. There was a lawsuit a few years ago.
That's what I, I didn't know if that went through, if they were allowed or whatever.
Only, only there, there-
None by legislation, I might offer.
I was wondering that.
But they are, they are permissible-
No.
Transit rentals?
Well, they're, none by legislation, a few by-
Would, would you like some clarification?
Yes.
So, there are a few historically grandfathered-in transient rentals on Cedar Point Road. There are no, there is no longer an option, and there are no new transient rent, there's no way to do a new transient rental on Cedar Point Road.
Okay, sure.
And the other thing is, does the city keep track of, of the crime area, increased crime numbers or anything in transient rentals all over the city? I mean, is it, is it-
It's a short history.
Okay, so is there, I mean, is there no more crime for what is allowed now?
To clarify, Mr. Chairman, we're talking about transient rentals in residential neighborhoods. We have had transient rentals in commercial condos, hotels, right? Is that accurate?
Correct. There are certain zoning districts that currently allow for transient rental, as we discussed earlier with the rezoning.
So we're really talking about transient in residential?
I think your question is like Airbnb rentals, not, are, are there people causing problems that are staying in hotels?
Right. Mine, mine is, since the city allows transient rentals or vacation rentals or Airbnbs or whatever you call them, has it increased the crime in those areas?
I, my understanding is that it's minimal and-
Okay.
And negligible, even.
Okay. Well, that, I just wanted to know if that's the reason why, you know, several people are having issues with it. I understand that, the whole reason that he wants to do this is because we have family that lives out of state, and, you know, we come from a large family that has many relatives, and if we get one family, and there could be, you know, 10, 12 people in using this vacation rental when it's not rented for other things, because my mother just recently passed away, and her house is no longer going to be available for overnight stays. And our intention was to make it a nice financial investment that improves the property and would only enhance the city, and the last thing he would want would be crime or disruption in the neighborhood. And if you know anything about Jim, he doesn't take kindly to any of his renters or tenants or anything creating problems for the neighborhood because he lives five miles away, and he is there if, if a neighbor were to call or to have a disruption. You know, our, we have family in Augusta, Georgia, we have people in Mesa, Arizona, and they can't afford the hotel rentals here. And so, you know, it was, would allow for family members to stay for a week or two weeks or whatever. And our intention for, for this B&amp;B or VRBO, if, if permitted, would to have it established to look and fit into the neighborhood as if they live next to us. I, my property was in a blighted area on Hayes Avenue, and I've done nothing but fix it up for the last 40 years because, and we bought the property next to where we owned because it would enhance ours and was a, a visual threat to ours. So we've been nothing but to improve the quality for our neighbors, for everybody who lives around us, and we wouldn't want to own or rent anything that we didn't live beside. I, and I have a tendency to think now, you know, I, I've never come to a city commission meeting like this and spoke, but 40 years ago, I was having terrible issues with drug houses and a lot of renters, not transient renters, just renters, around my business that created a lot of issues for my business. It was hurting my business. And I, I, my mother and I had this business, and I was under the impression that the city, city fathers really worried about downtown, downtown, bringing money downtown. And I always, we had the impression 40 years ago that it was the who's who of Sandusky that got approved, that owned, that everything kind of went their way, and everything that we had tried to do or tried to improve, or we lived in an area that they didn't care if there were drug houses by us or whatever. So we're real, real careful on what it does to the neighborhood, because my business has been there, like I've said, 40 years, and the, the renters and homeowners that have lived there all those years are dear friends of ours. And if we didn't operate business like that, they wouldn't think too highly of us. And we've done nothing but reach out and help them as they have gotten older and needed our help. With the, with the money and the kind of improvements he's making in these properties, first, it's not going to be low-end, get somebody in there just that wants to get drunk and, and fish all day. You know, it is a draw being by the water, being across from Lyons Park, knowing that they can go fishing, go boating. I didn't even know about the boat rental, which would be a draw to all the amenities in Sandusky. But he, he lives, shops, spends in Sandusky, Ohio. He pays local taxes. I don't have any idea what the bed taxes are, but I can assure you that I've had more trouble with renters than I could ever imagine having from somebody that's there for a week. I mean, at least a week. Thank God they're going to leave. But by somebody that monitors their property and lives so close, you know, there's much more concern about who you're going to put in, in there. Okay, and I agree with a lot of things that Mr. Schwanger has said, and I have seen in the papers about, you know, Sandusky being, being overtaken by rentals and, and not homeowners. But I also think there's a fine line between being progressive and improving the city and being stagnant. And sometimes change is painful, change is not good, but it can be beneficial to the neighborhood. The other thing with most of these VRBOs or transient rentals, you're going to be real fortunate if you get a renter every week for 52 weeks. You know, it could be empty all winter, which is still going to be monitored closely by the homeowner after sticking that much money into it. It's not going to be a, you know, uncared-for or whatever. I, I think that if the neighborhood that it's brought to because of the waterfront and because they did fill, fix so much blight at Lyons Park, it's a beautiful area. In fact, he put in new windows, new everything, and you look out and you can see Lyons Park, which would be an attraction for kids to play at the park. And I, I think I'm not correct if they're going to put, bring a sand beach in there or something, or, I mean, if that's down the road. So it's going to be enhanced to be family, to bring families in there that can enjoy the waterfront, enjoy these amenities, being so close to downtown. So, you know, I, I just wanted you to, to understand the caliber of ownership he would have and try to maintain the least, the least amount of nuisance to the neighborhood. Okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions?
No, I don't, I don't, no, not me.
Thank you. Ma'am, you want to come up?
Hello, can you hear me, everyone? My name is Emily Vasallo, and I live at 1403 Winnebago, at the very end. Me and my husband do own the home. I would like to point out at the very beginning here that my husband very stupidly signed Mr. Maldonado's petition because he wanted to use his yard dumpster to throw some trash in. So that was a fun experience for me. It was a fun argument we had. And all due respect to Mr. Maldonado, you don't live in this neighborhood. I live in this neighborhood. It's not a ghetto, it's not blighted, it's not, there's a lot of families, like the gentleman before me said. We, I have another neighbor who, her landlord's telling her she has to get out because she is going to go VRBO. And these are people who've lived there for five years, and I just think it's really sad, and we need to consider that. I'm sure he's not a slumlord. I'm sure that everything's just going to be peachy keen, but we have to really face the reality of it. So I'm just going to go through a few bullet points that I put together, and pardon me for reading it off of paper, I'm a little bit nervous. I've never spoken to a commission meeting before. So, "There are more than enough places for people to stay in town without taking over our neighborhoods, too. There are heavily policed locations in much busier parts of town. I, for one, don't even understand why someone would want to vacation in my neighborhood. I would be highly disappointed if I arrived to my vacation home and found that I was on the corner of a normal, quiet street and far from any real activities. We can talk about Lyons Park all we want, it's a city park. People aren't going on vacation to Lyons Park, okay? I would maybe consider renting it one time, but I probably wouldn't go back if I did. We are not downtown or 250. This is not waterfront. It is Lyons Park, and it's not a beach. There's rocks. You're not going to go pitch a blanket down there. Not that I don't love Lyons Park, I think it's beautiful, but it's, again, not a vacation destination. There's no nearby beach or pool to speak of, or any amenities, really, that Sandusky boasts are with, not within walking distance. Believe me, I've tried walking from downtown to my house. It's not a fun walk. It's long. Even Toffs is, is around the corner, but is there a sidewalk to get there? No, there's not. And there's also a railroad crossing that you have to go through. Number two, we're in the forgotten corner of Sandusky as it is. We're surrounded by trains at all hours of the day, often creating a huge safety risk due to lack of access for emergency personnel that no one appears to be addressing, particularly, not to get off topic, but right now, when all the crossings are closed other than Edgewater, and those are continuously blocked by a train, how is EMS supposed to get through in an emergency? We've had two fires this past year. The house burned down. There's continuously developing homeless shelters and rehab facilities that are keeping us on our toes already. I know I've brought it up at meetings before, but there is a constant flow of families and individuals crossing the tracks through our neighborhoods, even at times carrying strollers over them, and it's very dangerous. I've watched it myself. None of these things have forced us to move yet, but approving our neighborhood as a tourist destination just might do it. Do you really want to be a part of adding one more check on the list of things that's forcing people to consider leaving this area? There are plenty of people to rent to that live here year-round. Is there not enough money to be made for landlords simply by letting a family live in a home they own and just plan out renting it long-term? I realize the focus in this area is often so heavily on the tourism, but let us take pause. There is an entire town of people here that ensure those tourists have a good experience and want to come back. Don't we need places for these people to live, too? Do we really want to start pushing Sandusky residents out with price gouging? Because that's what it is. Lastly, but absolutely the most importantly thing I wanted to bring up is, there are several children in this neighborhood that walk, ride bikes, et cetera, and go to the park independently right now. There's no oversight on who is rented to and VRBOs, and that creates a safety risk for them, inviting a revolving door of strangers and his neighbors. How do we know they're not criminals? Sex offenders, traffickers? If we rent to a long-term rental, these things are public knowledge and reported, and everyone in the neighborhood is aware. The thought of putting Sandusky children in jeopardy so an outsider can benefit financially makes me extremely uncomfortable, as it should you. We have all seen the articles in the newspaper and read the police reports about the things that go on at local hotels and resorts during the summer months. Do we really want to welcome the possibility of that into our residential neighborhoods? I do not. In closing, I would urge you to side with the residents of this neighborhood in denying this request. I can assure you that the majority of these homeowners in this area object to this, regardless of who signed the petition. I do not personally believe 15 out of 39- who signed the petition. I do not personally believe 15 out of 39 is near enough signatures to even be considering this. Far less than half. That's a little ridiculous. We would hate to have to sell our homes and move because of one petition. Think about it. How would you like this in your neighborhood and around your children?
If I could ask just quickly, were you offered the petition to sign?
No, I wasn't home.
Okay.
Any questions?
No.
No question.
Anybody who's not spoken yet?
I haven't spoken on this one yet.
He hasn't spoken on this one yet.
Do you have anything to say other than the two times you've spoken already?
Yeah, it's on this issue. It's on this particular request.
I would ask that you keep it limited.
Oh, I'm here for 20 seconds, baby, because I'm past my bedtime.
Okay.
So, the, the concern was shared with me from the back audience. If this is tabled like the one previous, do these folks get another notice or do they just have to watch, you know, for a notice of the next meeting when you guys decide what you're going to do with these one or two issues? How's that work?
There's no requirement that we send out a second notice for the tabled. But it is, it would be scheduled for another public meeting and that notice does go out through all our normal channels and it would be the same forum as it is here. So, tabling it just changes the date at which it, it's scheduled.
So, you're saying we would make, make a motion to take it off the table, then it would be for a scheduled?
Correct.
We wouldn't make a decision right that moment.
No.
Another public hearing with further, further notice.
And by the way, the reason I wanted to table it is just so that people would, like, get a chance to speak on this issue before midnight, right?
But I appreciate the chairman and the president for letting me ask that question because I think that was just cleared up. The other issue of concern is I was at the firehouse meeting this fall and the petition was held, was handed over. So, that was one meeting you had on this particular issue. Did this come before the planning commission before, but it was a bigger, was it a bigger boundary or, and what happened when that came before the body?
It was a similar.
Never, never, this, this application never came before.
We, we did, there were, there were public meetings on a similar district. I don't know that there was actually a, I don't remember if there was a public hearing. Was there?
There was never a public hearing.
This is the first time it came to this body, but a smaller boundary. Okay, got you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
My name's Barb Manor. I live at 1317 LaSalle Street. I've lived there all my life and I think this is a bad idea. It's a family neighborhood. It's been that way for all this time. We enjoy Lyons Park, but we don't want outside strangers in the neighborhood. The city, you can ask your staff out in the West End how many times they get held up trying to get back to the shop to try to get parts or supplies or punch out because they're stopped by trains. It's constant. I don't think this is a good idea for our neighborhood. It's family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak?
Okay, just for record, I live in the, outside the corner of Marquette and Monroe Street. I've lived there.
Okay, John Taylor, 3408 West Monroe Street. Hey, I've lived out there for 30 years. I've seen a lot of good out to that end of town. I've seen a lot of bad out to that end of town. This house that Jim bought is right next door to my house. Sat vacant for five years. I waited for the bank to put it up for sale because I was going to buy it and I had the same idea Jim did. Well, when it came up for sale, I decided, no, I'm not spending that much money because the place wasn't worth that. Okay, the house right behind it sat vacant for three years. Jim bought that one and now he's fixing it up. Being next to that house, if I have a problem with it, first, I'm going to call Jim. Secondly, I'm going to call the police and I will continue to call the police until his license is revoked. Does that make sense? And that's the way everybody in the neighborhood should look at it. This man has done a fabulous job on this house. It was condemned. Sat empty for five years. Guy came in, didn't spare an expense. So, you know, I'm, I'm for it. And maybe you do the overlay, some of these other trashy places on Monroe Street can get cleaned up also. Meaning, you know, there's three or four apartment buildings there sitting right in front of, like where the health department is. There's always trash all over the place. Places need renovated, you know. Nobody looks after them. Nobody mows the grass most of the time. So, just to let you know, I am in for it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Anybody else first before Crow or Khan?
He already spoke on this issue.
Pardon me?
I thought we weren't letting people speak twice on the same issue based on what happened with Tim just a second ago, but excuse me.
No, I, I think he wants to respond to something.
The petition that was brought to you by the person, like I said, was in the fall. I just wanted to note that that area was from train tracks to train tracks at the time, not this proposed area. And when asked if he had rentals in the original proposal, that location does not fall in it. So, if he said that he had a rental, that, that rental was not in that location now.
Absolutely it is.
So, that, I just wanted to clear that up. And then, and for the record, about asking the young lady over here about if I signed the petition, her husband signed it. I wasn't going to wait around to wait for her wife to sign it. So, I, I didn't know. When I was leaving, he asked if he could throw something in the dumpster and I said, sure. It wasn't, okay, it wasn't the way it was made out to be, but that's all I have.
I didn't mean it that way. I was just pointing out that he signed it and he shouldn't have.
You have a hand up there.
So, he could take his number.
Sir.
I have a suggestion for the board. Maybe the application should be taken for only people that legally reside in the city of Sandusky and have a moratorium on the rest of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to say just one more thing.
Very briefly, this is scary. This is going to continue to go on and on and we can't, like I said before, continue to hollow out the court. I mean, we just can't do it.
What, this, this is, unless, is there anybody else that wants to speak, say anything? Okay, Mr. Maldonado, you can come up and say what you have to say and then we're done.
So, I just wanted to comment on the last, I own the property behind that. So, would she feel more comfortable if I made that my permanent residence? Because I can do that also. So, thank you.
Okay. Okay. I'm the chairman. I can't comment or vote. Does anybody care to make a motion? Now, again, as I understand it, the original request was for the smaller area. The planning staff has taken upon themselves to say it could be, the original area could be denied, correct me if I'm wrong, original area could be approved, could be denied, I suppose, based on the previous one, could be tabled, or the commission could choose to expand it to the larger drawn area or something between the two.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The way I understand it, and I think I'm correct, what was discussed is to open a public hearing and to include the resident, the, the properties within 300 feet of the expanded area on both sides of the street and with, without any particular constraints on, on the area. And that would be our purview after hearing, after hearing public comments. We know that it started out as an area bounded by the streets and I did point out that it would be better, in my opinion, to, in certain cases, when the character of the neighborhood is the same on both sides of the street, to, to include both sides of the street where it's appropriate, not necessarily in every case, but in, in a case where the, the houses are similar. So, for that, because I foresaw the possibility of adding to the chair's original proposal, I think staff deferred and I think this board deferred to, at least including the, the people who might be affected if we did both sides of the street. So, I think we're free to do nothing, do the original proposal, do something else entirely, at least reasonably within these boundaries. For my part, I'm inclined at this moment to, to do nothing. I think this is substantially similar to something that was proposed last year that we had public meetings on and it did not proceed, not for lack of interest, but certainly because there wasn't, I don't think, a consensus or, or plurality in, in the neighborhoods to, to support it. I'm not, I, I, I don't see this as changing my mind a whole lot.
Any more discussion from the commission? Anyone care to make a motion?
He said three things and if we make a motion, what do we make, what are we going to be making a motion on here?
So, if I, if I may, I think what Mr. Zulov was pointing out is that you have options to make a motion.
Yeah.
So, you can move to define an area, a different area, one of the proposed areas. If no motion is made, it would die for lack of want of a motion, which would be the do nothing option.
Okay.
I tech, I suppose you can make a motion to reject it, but you don't need to. Again, if there is no motion, it dies, the agenda item dies for lack of emotion.
Okay.
As chairman, I have a question. So, is, is the, the application really based on the smaller area?
There's no application in this case. The planning commission set the hearing.
Okay.
The petition that was brought to us was the boundary on the left. Staff's understanding of the direction from planning commission was to send public notice out to cover the boundary on the right. So, plenty of notice was sent if the commission chose to change the shape of a boundary, if they choose to move a boundary forward.
Mr. Chairman, to clarify, the, the, the decision to do nothing is a decision and we have that option.
I can't vote on the second one. I can vote on the, the first, the first public hearing. It would be helpful to me on both to have, to have a clear understanding of who within the number of houses in that district are in favor. In other words, how many, by, who signed a petition or whatever. And that, that's not clear to me right now.
My apologies, the petition in this case, oh.
Don't mean that directed towards you.
Fair. I was thinking when I presented the first one, like, oh, I probably should have just thrown that on the slide. This one was 27.7% of the owners in, of, or of signatures within the boundary on the left, from my recollection of that petition.
This is owners or potentially renters?
This was signatures attached to an address. It was not notice, it was not differentiated whether they were residents or property owners or both.
Because, to clarify, keep in mind the petitions are presented to the city. They are not city petitions. There's not a form in which we collect information. So, it is resident gathered information that we're presenting to you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bajali.
If we, if we were to do nothing, essentially reject this, that, that would not prohibit him from coming back if we ever do finalize some guidelines and fine tune things, right?
Do you mean in a, like a new regulatory? What a rejection would mean would be the original proposal?
Yeah.
Is specifically rejected.
Yeah.
That's it. It doesn't procl, preclude that person from reapproaching or the planning commission taking different action for a transient overlay district. It also would not preclude someone under a tweaked ordinance from applying or following those new guidelines if those exist in the future.
Mr. Chairman, if it helps any.
I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah, if it, if it helps any, we have certain procedures. For example, a, I recently became clear to me that a, a conditional use permit, once heard, if, if it fails, if it's rejected, the same application cannot be made for two years, right? So, this keeps, you know, enthusiastic persistence from bogging down the system. So, if it's substantially, first of all, this, this isn't a specific proposal. I mean, it's a proposal. It's not an application. So, again, do nothing, table it if you want to keep talking about it. Even a motion to adjourn would, you know.
So, Mr. Zulov?
Doing nothing is a decision.
I'm waiting for you to make a motion.
Before he does.
If you, if you want a motion from me, it's going to be to adjourn because, so I'm not going to do that because, until, until we've exhausted other options. In my opinion, it's, it went nowhere before. I don't think it, it has sufficient public support and sufficiently fits the ordinance to, to be a clear yes or a clear win. We, we, I'm not ready to make a motion. If somebody thinks they are, they, they should. I don't, I don't think it's a good idea. I don't think this is, this, I don't think this fits the criteria. I think there's enough local opposition and I'm a strong proponent of protecting the rights of people that are already there. That's, I, I believe strongly in personal property rights and the right to do with, with you, what you want with your property, but limited by the rights of your neighbors. And I don't think we should, I will never vote for changing zoning on residents who place substantial amounts, in many cases, of their personal wealth in their home. And I, I, I won't, I will not lightly change the zoning against the wishes of, of a, of a local resident.
As chairman, I just have a question of your comment. Is that, on the basis that it's gone nowhere before, what do you mean it's gone?
We had hearing, we had, we had public meetings regarding this area, a similar area, and I, I guess I don't recall the boundaries, as well as meetings. It was September and October, I believe, of 2021. And it was this, this rough area and an area on Decatur, perhaps? No.
McDonough.
Farther down.
McDonough, on the west side of downtown.
McDonough, okay, right. And, and neither one of those resulted in action, which, by the way, is a decision. A decision not to act is a decision not to act. And
Those were just exploratory hearings.
This, you're debating me. This is a, this is a process. I'm sorry, I lost my thought. But we don't have to act here.
Mr. Chairman.
What we've been doing is framing this as we owe people a decision. We've, doing nothing is a decision to not do anything, right? So, we got to stop framing, not, not giving a definitive answer to every request as, as not deciding. We decided not to do anything. We can do that tonight or we can decide to try to do something.
Yeah, I was just, gonna say, I'm, I am generally in favor of VRBOs. I, I know that there's been a lot of discussion here tonight on the opposite and I appreciate and actually consider a lot of that and particularly, home costs worry me. But I too would agree that in this case, one person who owns a property in here has spoke up for this and he doesn't live there and people who do live there spoke against it, so I'm not gonna be making a motion to.
Well, I would make the motion to adjourn.
Through the chair. May I make one comment?
Yes, Ms. Blair.
I do have a very short, I promise, item of other business that I would like to present before you entertain a motion to adjourn in respect to someone else.
We don't have a second yet, so you're fine. No second.
Well, there's been a motion and no second and Ms. Blair has other business.
Who made the motion?
Again, just as chairman, I'm not supposed to be commenting on this, but if you, if the, the commission tabled one, I don't know why, if they can't come to a conclusion and want to think about this further or discuss it further, this couldn't be tabled and that would seem to solve the issue and we could move forward. So that's, that's my comment as chairman.
Just, just for the sake of consistency, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to table this request.
I'll second it.
Apparently no discussion on this, so all in favor of tabling? And I can't vote.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Okay.
Please.
Mr. Chairman, through you. So if we don't table it, what's?
Then it stays open for discussion.
Okay.
Unless there's no motion, at which point it dies for lack of a motion.
And we're not debating the, the tabling here, we're, we're raising points of order here, so that's in order. And it, it, it may never be taken up from the table either. It doesn't get taken up from the table.
Unless you bring it back from the table.
Someone makes the motion to take it up from the table.
Can I ask a question?
No. I'm sorry. That's the chairman's job.
If it's tabled and, and you choose to bring it up for rediscussion, will we then be notified if that?
A point of order, Mr. Chair.
Or is this it?
Well, I think that's been answered by the consul before that.
Well, I don't know, like, letter's gonna come to my house. Here do I find out that?
So.
We have a motion to table.
Let, let me answer this question just so we can get this clarified. So if the motion to table passes, it is put on the table until this commission makes a motion to remove it from the table. If that motion passes at a subsequent meeting, it then comes back at a few, the next meeting, so two meetings, at which point there is not a requirement that we send out letters again because it has already been publicly notified per ordinance. However, all of our public meetings, including this one, are posted on our website, they're put on social media. So I was looking at our comms director to make sure that was correct. And our, our notify, there's public notice provided of all of our public meetings. So that notice will be normally provided, but, but the city is not required to send out another round of letters on this topic, if that helps.
There, there's been a motion to table in seconds, so I think we need to call.
Go ahead.
Mr. McGory.
I can't vote.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, to table.
Ms. Castillo.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Whalen.
No.
And Mr. Zuloff.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Ms. Blair, you have something further?
I know you want to keep this discussion going.
Better be important.
We have received a petition from Mr. David Stuck, who resides at 418 McDonough Street, for the consideration of a transient rental overlay district on the west side of downtown. It's similar to the area that was considered at a public meeting last fall, so he's been, you've heard from him before. He has, the boundaries are shown on the slide. He drew the boundaries on the backs of properties based on what I told him I heard you all talking about last meeting. He also included the old doghouse property, which is a city-owned property that would give the city, you know, I don't know if I, if that matters, but it would give flexibility to the future of that property, which has been a nuisance in the neighborhood for some time. And it also includes the row houses on Adams Street that have been mentioned to me before by a planning commissioner that would be good candidates for Airbnb, VRBO, or at least to see new investment in them because they're, they're a gem really of, of architecture of the city. The boundaries are front, the backs of parcels fronting McDonough Street between West Adams Street and West Jefferson Street and the corresponding parcels that front Adams and Jefferson within that boundary, roughly making a rectangle in that area. It's 51 parcels, it's about 50 homes and 16 signatures were submitted, which is 31.4% of parcels. And that, Mr. Stuck asked me if he thought that was sufficient and I reiterated Mr. Whalen's announcement at a meeting of when he would make a motion to set a public hearing. And so that was what Mr. Stuck submitted to me to present to you. So I would just, if you, if you follow the same thing you did last month, then perhaps you would make a motion to set a public hearing for, to consider this one the next.
And that can be made at next meeting, correct?
That could be made.
The motion like just because you're bringing it up now doesn't mean there needs to be a motion today.
It's completely up to you.
Yeah, it's totally up to you.
We can bring up this motion at any point in time.
You can bring up that motion at any point in time.
After this extended period of time, that's, would be my thought.
Yeah. Well, I don't think we've made a lot of progress tonight on these two applications.
Yeah.
I just didn't want to be inconsistent because I received it and I prepared it for you, so I wanted to present it.
And to not be inconsistent, I probably will make that motion at next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, while, while, before we leave, before we adjourn, while we're still on other business, I, I would like to request that a committee is put together of myself and Mr. Miller because I think we're probably at both ends of the extreme on this, this transient housing. And we work with staff on looking at these requirements and try to fine tune things and bring back some sort of draft for the planning commission to look at and tune up and do whatever they want with it. But at least I'd like to start this process.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to be a part of some committee conversations with regard to this process and just narrowing down caps or areas and different things like that I brought up as well.
I would remind everyone that depending on how many planning commissioners want to serve on said committee.
That's right.
There will be, it will have to be a public meeting, depending on the number of you that wish to.
And that number is what, Mr. I?
That number would be, there are seven of you all, so if four or more of you wish to convene, it will need to be a public meeting.
I wonder if it would be a good idea to knock that around a little bit and address that as the first agenda item in the next meeting.
But, I mean.
My, my fear is that if we don't get started, we're just, this, this wheel just keeps turning and we're back at the same, at the same thing every time.
Now, just to reply personally, not to say that that's a bad idea, however, can be germinated, but.
Yeah.
So let's say you, you, you talk about caps, overall cap. Pick a number, 1,500, 20, you know, 5,000, whatever. And, but that still doesn't address these, you know, we, we came up with.
But, but it, it might not, but let's say we talk about an overall cap and we talk about a percentage of houses allowed in any block. So somebody comes and they've got a request, maybe they come for just their, their place. You get two, you get 20% in that neighborhood, that addresses that. Mallway family structure, shouldn't we have a cap for mallway family structures? So if you've got 16 units in a, in a apartment building, maybe 30%? I don't know. Those are the things that I want to talk about.
And just to play devil's advocate, so if, if you were within a cap to begin with and then if you said, okay, we're gonna set the minimum threshold for a, a request or an application for a given area at say 45%, people want to do it because that, or even 50%. That doesn't require the 50% that don't want to do it to do it.
Right. And, and maybe you put a, a number on the petition, you know, you've got to have 70% of the, the homeowners. I don't know if that's legal, but they gotta be homeowners and not, not runners. But these are all things that we can put together in a draft and, and I guess we're out of debate tonight, at least I.
To, to avoid the sunshine issue, I mean, not, at least to begin with, get together with staff and, and share your personal opinions and let them gel it together.
Right. I thought maybe Ms. Castillo and Mr. Miller, if he's willing, and, and staff will sit down and get the process going.
I'd be happy to do that.
I think it's a good idea.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'd like to make, through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
There's been a motion.
Oh, there has?
You can second.
Oh, yes, I'd second that. I'm sorry, I have to get my.
Motion to adjourn, that's what she means.
I'm sorry, I second the motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'm panicking because I just realized.
Hi.